It will be May 14th, 2020, meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Councilmember Will Bell for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Who is that?
That's okay, don't worry about it. It was me. Everybody still there?
All right. Heavenly Father, come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord, as we make decisions that might affect the citizens of the city of Greenville, and continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mm-hmm. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Proton Glover? You're muted.
Can you unmute her back there?
Here.
Here, here, Will.
Councilmember Bell?
Here. Oh. I am muted, Mayor Proton. Whoops, you just... There, now, Ms. Glover, you're good now.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
I'm here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
It looks like...
Where'd he go?
Felt like he has dropped off.
Um, hold on, I will just check if he's in the attendees.
He's not.
Okay.
He's out.
Maybe we should give him a few minutes just to come back online.
Go through the attendance.
Yeah. Is he the last one for the attendance?
Um, nope. Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Right here.
Okay, well, um, Mayor Connolly, that's a quorum.
All right. Has anybody made contact with Councilmember Litchfield?
I, I have just texted him.
Okay. Let's give it a second before we move on.
I think that's an outboard motor I hear.
Maybe he left.
No, just you got kicked off. No, we're, we're all on. So, here, I'll, I'll keep on moving.
Could we proceed, and I would just note what time he came in and joined the meeting?
Sure. Yeah, as soon as the city manager gets off the phone, we'll, we'll go ahead and proceed.
I am on the phone with Councilmember Litchfield. He is working on getting, um, getting back into the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, he said to go ahead and start. Okay, if you need anything, we'll call me, okay? Thanks. Okay, he said to go ahead and start.
All right, now we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
No, Mayor, not tonight.
All right. Attorney Gert, I think you would like to add something before we approve the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I request council to add a motion to recess this meeting, uh, to be considered at the end of this agenda right before adjournment for the following reason. Reasons, uh, Senate Bill 704 passed recently in response to COVID-19, uh, provides that a public body during a remote virtual meeting is required to allow written comments on the subject of the public hearing to be submitted, uh, between notice of the public hearing and 24 hours after the public hearing. Uh, I advise that council not take action on the public hearings that you will hear this evening until after the written comment period has expired. And that's 24 hours after the public hearing. But instead, take action at a recessed meeting, which I'm recommending take place on May 18th. Uh, again, the current council agenda for tonight has seven public hearings. And again, I recommend the council consider approval of the agenda, and the mayor requests adding the motion to recess until May 18th at 6:00 PM, and it will be a virtual meeting.
This is councilman...
Good. This is Councilman Smiley. I move that we add, uh, a motion to recess as, uh, item, I guess, 11 directly before adjournment and turn item, turn adjournment into item 12.
This is Councilmember Bell. I second that motion.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. I'll now, all on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Proton Glover? Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Daniels?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Smiley?
Smiley votes aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Yes. Aye.
Mayor, that's 6-0 on approval.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or were scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who had registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker?
Um, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any registered speakers, but I will check the inbox and see, um, if there were any email comments. Okay, and we do not have any email comments for public comment.
All right. Seeing that we don't have anyone signed up or any comments, we will close the public comment period. We'll move on to our next item, which is appointments, and I will call on the city clerk.
Hey, um, first appointment we have is for Emily Kane, um, Environmental Advisory Commission, Councilmember Meyerhopper.
I'll continue that one, and, um, but I did also want to reappoint Ann Maxwell to the Environmental Advisory Commission, please.
Okay. Historic Preservation Commission, Councilmember Daniels.
I would like to, uh, wait a minute. What's my person's name? Hold on. I would like to appoint Carrie Carlin.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Well, is the room locked? Yes. I'm trying to get him to add well, if he can.
I will second that mo, the, the appointment.
Thank you.
Can you give me that name one more time?
Carrie Carlin.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, second by...
Smiley.
Councilmember Smiley. I'll now call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Uh.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, that's 6-0 on approval.
All right, congratulations for the appointment.
Okay, next, um, we have, uh, the Human Relations Council. Mayor Proton Glover?
Uh, continue.
Okay, next is Housing Authority. Um, we've got one appointment for Councilmember Smiley.
My understanding is we're waiting for the residents to send us a name.
Yep, that's where the residents' council position and anyone on the city council can, um, make a motion to approve their nomination. They haven't sent us that yet, but there is still the appointment for, um, Dr. Angela Marshall.
Okay, I will reappoint, I move that we reappoint Dr. Marshall.
Councilmember Daniels, I second that.
All right, the motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. I will now call on the city clerk to take the vote.
Okay, Mayor Proton Glover?
Uh.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Mayor, that's 6-0 in approval.
All right, congratulations, Dr. Marshall.
Next, we have the Planning and Zoning Commission, Councilmember Bell.
I'll continue mine, please.
Okay. Um, Mayor Proton Glover?
Continue.
Okay, um, Councilmember Smiley?
I'm re, I'd like to reappoint Pat Maxwell. I so moved.
This is Councilmember Bell, second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Bell. Um, all those who favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call on the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Mayor, that's 6-0 in approval.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Maxwell.
Next forward is the Police Community Relations Committee, Councilmember Bell?
I'll continue.
Okay. Next is Recreation and Parks Commission, Councilmember Bell?
I'll continue that as well.
Okay. And, um, another appointment for Recreation and Parks, Mayor Proton Glover?
Um, Christian Williams is, uh, eligible, um, because she's filled an unexpired term, so I'm going to reappoint her.
Okay.
This is Councilmember Bell, second.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Proton Glover, second by Councilmember Bell. All those who oppose say aye, those opposed say nay. I will call on the city clerk to take the vo, take the vote.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Aye.
Mayor, that's 6-0 on approval.
All right, congratulations, Christian Williams.
Okay, and next is the Youth Council, Mayor Proton Glover?
Continue.
Okay, Mayor Connolly, that concludes the appointments for tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Now, new, move on to new business, uh, which is the public hearings. I'm going to read the, uh, the policy for the public hearings first before we get started. This is the policy of public hearings adopted by the city council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and in the city council during discussions. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing, as allowed by the mayor, in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussions difficult. We ask for your cooperation. In addition to that, I do want to read this as well. Pursuant to, uh, North Carolina General, General Statute 166A-1924, a new law involving virtual meetings during a state declared emergency, any person may submit a written comment 24 hours after public hearings, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Uh, also want to remind councilmembers that they have to vote by roll call in each case pursuant to the new law. Council will conduct each public hearing tonight and then close each public hearing. Uh, in each case, the mayor will ask for a motion to continue the matter until Monday, uh, May 18th at 6:00 PM, to allow the written comment period to expire. An applicant may ask for another date if they would like to, uh, to be in June instead of a day on Monday. With that, I would like to, uh, call on the, uh, city manager for the first public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Am I on? Yes, I am on. Um, the first item this evening is an ordinance requested by Bobby W. Joyner to rezonate 7.426 acres located on the south side of East Fire Tower Road, east of Kittrel Road, from RA-20 Residential Agriculture to OR Office Residential High Density Multifamily. And I'll call on Brad Sevier to provide that presentation. Brad?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, my name's Brad Sevier. I'm a planner here with the planning department of the city. Excuse me one moment. This is a general location map for the project. You can see it's located in the southeast quadrant of the city. If you take a look on the map there, it's where the, that red star is located, just in the bottom right there. Uh, here's an aerial map. Uh, the project, you can see it's, it's very close to the intersection of Charles and Fire Tower, and the Harris Teeter there is labeled to give you some idea, so it's on the same side of Fire Tower as that Harris Teeter. Uh, this is a, a picture of the site, um, and as you're looking at this picture, you're looking across East Fire Tower Road, um, you're looking south across the road there. Uh, the, the, the project is for, uh, 7.426 acre area, um, as you can see on the survey. Uh, the, the existing land use of the property, it's vacant. Uh, at one time it was used for an agricultural field, but it's, it's currently sitting vacant, and there's nothing on the property. Um, the project is not in the floodplain, uh, but in the event that it is subject to stormwater detention rules, uh, 25-year detention, um, would be required, as well as nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. The proposed rezoning has the potential to increase, um, the trips per day by 453. Uh, as you can see, it's over by the, the busy intersection there, that community activity center that's marked out at Char, at Charles and Boulevard, Charles Boulevard and Fire Tower Road. The current zoning is RA-20, and with the current zoning, they could accommodate about 14 single-family houses. With the requested rezoning, we're looking probably something closer to 83 to 86 multifamily units. That's one, two, and three-bedroom units. The future land use and character map designates this property for the traditional neighborhood medium-to-high-density designation, and, um, the request is, is pretty in line with that, and you can see our, our transitional zoning pattern. The further you get from the intersection of Charles and Fire Tower, the less intense the zoning is. And so this is kind of an intermediate step, um, once you get away from the really intense commercial. So, that's why this is, uh, you know, this request is, is in line with what's shown on the character map there. Um, the request is in line with, um, is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026 Plan and the Future Land Use and Character Map. So, staff recommends approval of the requested rezoning, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the request, by, uh, a margin of five to three, and it's February 18th meeting, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Sevier?
Um, I have questions, but I can wait until after the public hearing. It depends on when you want to do it.
If you, uh, if you want to ask the questions now, that's fine, I think.
Okay, could you go over the traffic report, please?
Uh, sure, yeah, let me, um, go back to, to that, sorry, real quick. So, um... Okay, so based on, the, the, the traffic report basically says that the, um, the rezoning could generate up to 587, uh, trips per day increased, um, and that's, and it, and it... That's a, that's an increase of 453 trips per day. Plus the old traffic report from the engineering department is, what, what did you want to know about it?
What's the current, what's the current, um, capacity of the road? What will the, what will the traffic on the road be at, um, build-out?
Okay, just one moment. Uh, yeah, so this is the, um, on the screen now, we've got the, um, thoroughfare and traffic report for this site, um, and... You know, I'm not, um... I'm not particularly well-versed in traffic engineering. I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, so you can kind of see...
So, if I can read, if I read that correctly, it says that the design, the design of the road is 13,300 vehicles per day. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Aye.
And there currently, and there are currently 23,815 per day?
Uh, Rick, do you want to take this?
Yeah, I, I'd prefer to.
Thank you.
Councilmen, uh, yes, you're reading that correct. The current ADT is, is 23,000. The design ADT for this roadway is 13,000, so it is over, it's over capacity now. Um, as you can see, the, uh, the, uh, uh, the change with the controlled access with the future project would bring the capacity up to 40,000. And that's, that would be the Boulevard treatment, uh, two ways in each direction, what a center median.
But that, and that was, that treatment was originally scheduled to be two or three years in the future, and then it was recently moved off to at least five years in the future, and now with COVID, it could be substantially more than that, correct?
It's correct.
So, essentially, the current vehicles, the, for the foreseeable future, the capacity of the road is 13,300 cars, and we're nearly twice that now. How many additional, um, how many additional trips would be generated by full build-out if this parcel were reserved?
The difference between the current zoning and the proposed zoning is, is roughly 450.
So that would take it to, almost, to very nearly double the capacity of, the design capacity of the road.
It would take it over 24, over 24,000. That's correct. And that split, that, that, that projection of split was, um, the traffic could be split 60% west of the site, 40% east of the site. Uh, one, one thing to note, though, let's remember that's a daily traffic volume ADT. And if you want to get a more assessment of the, of the peak hour, which is how we really look at impact for capacity, uh, you could, you could roughly take an approximation of 10%. So, that 450 vehicles would distribute, uh, 272, uh, to the west and 181, that's daily. So, hourly, that would only be 27 trips to the west and 18 trips to the east in the peak hour.
And the DOT has, if I'm correct, has, has identified this as a, uh, this area, from this area, uh, toward Charles and, um, um, Arlington as, you know, an area of the, that, you know, is, that's, you know, already under, uh, you know, under duress and likely to be even worse in the coming years, given their projected growth rates. That's why they're envisioning at some point doing a, an, an extraordinarily, um, comprehensive rerouting of the traffic on that road going through the, the two intersections at Arlington and Charles, correct?
That's absolutely correct. It, that, that project, that project is a capacity improvement project, yes.
And, and this, and this rezoning would simply add, uh, substantial additional traffic to that roadway that's already over capacity until such time as that, um, all of that work can get done.
That's correct.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for staff?
I had a quick one, please, Mayor.
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Just to confirm, and I've asked this question of staff many times, and I know I sound like a broken record, but have we received any idea of, uh, any sort of update from the NC DOT about what's going on there and what the future may, may bring?
So, um, Councilmember Meyerhopper, I'll, um, step in on this one. Um, we know, um, we know that, um, all the NC DOT projects have been delayed. We knew that six months ago or so. Um, we also know that, um, the financial picture for NC DOT has, um, has become bleak, more bleak as time goes on, and, um, we will expect further delays on these projects. I, I would defer to Lisa if she has any additional knowledge on that.
The only thing that I can really add is I did receive updated municipal agreements for Fire Tower, this project in particular, um, because they added a, um, discrimination clause to the municipal agreement. So that would lead you to believe that they intend to move forward with this before others, but as Ann said, we haven't gotten any indication of funding for any of these projects.
Where would this rank as it pertains to other projects in the city like Dickinson Avenue, Evans Street? Um, I, I believe those would have priority, correct?
But I believe that they are, those two projects would be slated to begin before this one.
And so where would the Fire Tower, um, where would this project ranked in, in terms of priority for us? Would it be our third? Would it be the next one after those two? Fourth, fifth?
I, I don't have, um, that list in front of me right now. I certainly can, can forward it, uh, to you after the meeting. I believe DOT, um, had shared a list with Ann and I, um, maybe a few months ago on the priority that they had designated for each of the projects, and it wasn't solely dependent on what our desires were. They, they also ranked the priority based on where they were at in the project. Uh, so if they were at right-of-way or had already completed the environmental statements, they might have ranked those a little higher, um, than any other, so...
Okay, yeah, I'd love, I, 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 I think, I'd love to see, maybe the rest of the council would like to see, oh, you know, what the, uh, priority looks like for the, uh, projects.
Absolutely.
It is important to point out, though, that that priority, or that priority ranking was done before COVID and before the most recent, um, financial picture for NC DOT. Um, we know that NC DOT is re-looking at existing agreements. We know they're looking at existing contracts, and so I feel like, um, while it is the most up-to-date information, it is out of date at this point.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any other questions for staff? All right, seen none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward or speak, I believe. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
The first speaker that we have is Dustin Mills.
Okay Valerie, I can see you, but I don't, my video, I don't see my video.
You need, I need your camera, there you go.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. My name's Dustin Mills. I'm the president of Taff Mills Group. Uh, our address is 2217 St. Petersburg Road. Uh, I am here tonight representing the applicant, Mr. Joyner. I'm also here tonight as a neighboring property owner. We own the property directly across the street, um, from this property that was rezoned last year. We have been looking for some time in this area, uh, for a site that makes sense to develop, uh, affordable senior housing. And we are in contract with Mr. Joyner, uh, subject and contingent to this rezoning moving forward, to attempt to develop, uh, 72 units of affordable housing. I recognize that when council votes, they're not able to consider a specific use. So I won't harp on that too much, but I just wanted to make that clear that that was our interest in it because I think that it does have an impact on, uh, some components that we talk about from a traffic standpoint. I think it's worth noting that as we, as I said earlier, there's been no, uh, affordable senior housing done in this area in over more than a decade. And the most recent senior housing done in Greenville is Parkside Commons, which we own and which the city invested in. And that won the Housing North Carolina Award, which is the, the state's highest housing honor for affordable housing. We like this location for the same reason that all the people who have probably written in or who may speak tonight are in opposition, uh, because it's close to shopping, it's close to amenities. It's in an area where we would like to live ourselves. And in thinking about that, we, we found this site and you can walk to a Walgreens, you can walk to a Harris Teeter, you can walk to a bank, you can walk to grocery stores. And so we think that this particular site, uh, is ideal for senior housing. With that said, this is a continuation of the original parcel that Mr. Joyner owned, that we, uh, purchased, uh, earlier this year. And we are asking for the same zoning on this site as was approved last year, on the earlier portion of Mr. Joyner's site. So, uh, there is established precedent. As staff said, you know, this does meet the Horizon plan, it meets all the future land use plans. If you look at the map, it's consistent with everything, um, around it. Uh, it does check the box for the transitional buffer zone. But when I think about this particular location, I was born and raised in Greenville. I understand that we do have traffic. And just in hearing, uh, the council member Smiley's, uh, concerns about traffic, I won't dispute that we do have traffic. But what I would point out to this council, when they're thinking about this, is that, you know, we're a vibrant community. We have a lot going on economically. And with this activity, we've got the fourth largest university in the state. We've got a large medical center, we've got tons of industry, uh, we've got tons of tourism, but with that comes traffic. It is a, is a necessary byproduct of our active community. And I would hate for an opportunity like senior affordable housing to be denied because of what we determined to be a relatively and statistically insignificant, uh, increase in traffic. Mr. Caesar touched on it briefly, but I want to reiterate and point out that the, um, to the, uh, west, the, the difference between this zoning, that's the present zoning and the proposed zoning, is going to represent just a 1% increase in average daily traffic. 1%. Heading to the east, it's going to represent less than 1%. I would hate to miss out on a senior housing, affordable housing opportunity over less than 1% heading one way. And, uh, so from our standpoint, I wanted to point that out, that the number seems large and we don't dispute that, if you sit on the site, which we do a lot because we're, we're, you know, building across the street in the morning and the afternoons, it is busy. But during the daytime, most of the time it's, it's steady, but not busy. That's a visual, uh, representation. I think it's worth noting that the, the, the traffic, uh, forecasts are based on maximum, uh, use. Uh, I think it's point, we're pointing out that the property that we bought across the street, we are not, um, seeking maximum density on that development, we typically don't. We're less than 90% capacity, so I, I think that's worth noting. We like the, uh, we don't know, we like council, don't know when the DOT improvements are going to happen, but we hope that they do happen in the very near future. This property's been zoned, its present zoning since 1972, when it came into Greenville's ETJ. When council votes on a future land use plan, they are signifying per that plan that that is what they envisioned the site being. I think it would be unfair to Mr. Joyner, uh, for, uh, what we perceive a minor increase in traffic, again, 1% one way and less than 1% the other way, to allow him, to not allow him to move forward with what council in their voting has deemed the highest and best use, uh, for this particular property. And again, you know, we regularly talk about being open for business. We're a Greenville business, we want business in the community. But with business and economic activity comes traffic. You know, I can't state that enough. I don't think that it would be fair to Mr. Joyner, to us as the app, to us as the future purchaser, or to the residents that we will be able to serve, uh, in the future to deny this based on, uh, again, what I consider to be a statistically insignificant, uh, increase in traffic. Most of the opposition that we've gotten has been kind of cloaked under the veil of traffic. Uh, but we have gotten questions like, will millionaires live here or will Section 8 people live here? And my answer to that is, we are seeking this to be affordable housing for seniors 55 and older. That implies that millionaires will not live here, but it's probably owned by our organization and it is not a Section 8. Uh, we, there are no Section 8 vouchers provided by our property. Who is going to live here? It's residents from within this community. I can't, you know, speculate more than that. Safety and fire concerns, uh, was brought up during the planning commission. Will be a taxpaying property, uh, property owner? And we are, you know, afforded those same rights as a property owner, uh, in the city of Greenville. Will this impact property values? There are, uh, a multitude of studies that prove, um, both in North Carolina and nationwide, that, um, that there, that multifamily or uses within the zoning classification have minimal or no impact on property values. I have Scott Anderson, who may speak next, uh, more on the technical side. But in summary, again, less than 1% one way, just 1% the other way. We have a precedent in place. This is identical to the zoning that, uh, was voted in the affirmative one year ago. If we are open for business, I don't think that as a community, we should be open for business five years from now when, uh, something is in place that would offset this 1% increase in traffic. We are in compliance with Horizon 2026. The future land use staff and planning commission has recommended it. And with that, I will, uh, cede the balance of my time and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Mills?
I have a question.
Councilmember Meyerhafer?
So Mr. Mills, when you reference, um, 72 units, are these 72 one bedroom units or, uh, a variation between one, two and three bedroom units?
We are, we have a mix. Our proposed mix right now is one and two bedroom units. There are no three bedrooms. And the proposed, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The proposed building that they would be housed in is a single building with interior loaded corridors. It's identical to Parkside Commons, which the city is an investor in, uh, which I referenced earlier, which is an award winning senior housing development here in Greenville. That's presently at 100% occupancy, occupancy with a waiting list equally as long.
And so with Parkside Commons, did you guys, you guys built that?
We did, and we, we built it and we still own it.
Okay. In terms of, this may be a tough question to answer, but with, um, your, your senior housing, do they, are they, are they all, um, do they all have vehicles? What's the ratio of, uh, the seniors with and without vehicles?
Well, I, I appreciate you asking me that. We are getting ready to begin construction on a similar development in Wake Forest, uh, just outside of Raleigh. Wake Forest had a parking ratio of one, uh, one unit to each, one space to each unit. We commissioned a parking study in requesting a reduction in that parking. That parking, uh, study proved that effectively you could do down to a half of one spot for every, uh, unit because in affordable developments, there just are less vehicles and especially ones that are 55 and older. And so we were successful in getting that, um, uh, change made and they allowed us to, uh, it was a happy medium. And we agreed to 75, 275 of one space per unit. So on a development like this, fortunately for us, we do have plenty of space in this. If, if the city had a one to one or even greater, uh, we would have capacity on site to accommodate that. But we own multiple developments and, um, I'd be happy to provide data between now and tomorrow, um, during the 24 hour period, that shows that senior affordable housing developments are well under one space per unit in their utilization of parking.
Mr. Mayor, this is Shante. Do you mind, I, I would just like to mention that, um, the council needs to rely on all of the uses within the requested zoning to make their decision and cannot rely on one specific use.
Thank you, Ms. Gooby.
I concur with Ms. Gooby. Manuel McGirt?
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Mills? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Mills.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council.
We'll move on to the, uh, next person. Like to speak in, uh, on behalf of the applicant. You have three minutes, please state your name for the record.
Next speaker we have that's registered is Scott Anderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um, my name is Scott Anderson. Um, I'm a local civil engineer with Art Consulting Group. And I've been assisting, uh, Dustin and Mr. Joyner with this rezoning request. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in February, we had a few questions and items that were raised by neighbors. And so, um, I'd like to kind of try to address some of those, um, and then help address some of the other traffic concerns. Obviously, traffic, like Dustin said, is the major concern here. And we know that Fire Tower Road widening project is in the works, however, timelines are unsure of. But the rezoning request also is just the start of the design process. Once we start a design, um, just like the roadway, it'll take two to three years for any development project from the time this property is rezoned, um, until it becomes an active viable functioning, um, project. So just keep that in mind as we talk about delays in the roadway project. There are also, you know, the timing that it takes to get this, a new project, um, in the works. Access to Fire Tower Road during the design process, um, we'll have to meet with DOT and city traffic engineers to make sure whatever development goes in, um, measures are put in place to mitigate traffic and to minimize the impact on the overall roadway network. For example, the project that is currently underway across the street on Mr. Joyner's property, that property is limited to write-in, write-out access only. It will also be required to build a new right turn lane and also provide a stub to the west, um, for future cross access. So measures will be put into place to help mitigate any new development traffic issues. Uh, another important thing that I think to help mitigate traffic measures is good planning. Um, and I think that's why locating this property as a higher density residential is good because we're putting it close to a commercial node. So, um, anytime we can keep higher density residential close to a commercial node, it helps to reduce the overall traffic. It, for example, it reduces the length of vehicle trips. It allows for increased walkability. And compact developments capitalize on existing infrastructure, which saves money and resources while more efficiently using land and preserving habitat, farmland and open spaces on the urban fringe. As you know, there are, um, many uses within a half mile of this property, including banks, grocery, pharmacy, retail, restaurants. So that's why this site is, um, a good use for multifamily. There were concerns over buffers and, and height, um, that were addressed. Any new multifamily or office development will be required to provide landscape buffers that are designed to provide a visual screen between the new development and existing single family homes. Um, and building heights will be limited by the zoning ordinance. Um, and then the last concern I'd like to address is the stormwater runoff. Any new development must meet local and state requirements and provide stormwater controls so that stormwater leaving the site after development is equal to or less than the current runoff. Also, any additional stormwater infrastructure will be constructed to adequately convey the stormwater runoff away from the site. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I do, this is Smiley.
Councilmember Smiley?
Mr. Anderson, since you spoke about, um, the traffic, so the design ADT on the road is 13,300 vehicles. And the development at, at full build out would add 587 vehicle trips per day, is that correct?
Correct, potentially. That's assuming a, a worst case scenario.
So 587 is about 5% of the designed ADT of the road, right?
Correct.
So we're not talking about adding 1% traffic. We're talking about adding, you know, that the road's designed for, if the road were designed, that with the road were at 95%, then this would add the last 5%, right? That would bring it up to capacity. If the road, if the road were currently at 95% capacity, development as proposed on this spot would bring it to full capacity. That'd be about 5%, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the fact that, so it's not 1% and it's 5%. And if the road's already at 190% capacity, are those basically the, the, the circumstances we're looking at?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? Seen none? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant? May speak now. Please say your name, uh, for the record, you have three minutes.
We do not have any additional speakers either for or against, but I will check the mailbox, the inbox, just to see if there were any messages received. In favor.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, none that I see in favor.
All right, thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may now come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
And then registered to speak in opposition, Mr. Mayor. We do have a couple of, um, comments that I will read into record.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm going to start the timer, it's still subject to the three minute rules. This portion of the public hearing will end at 7:10. First, I have been a resident of Tucker Estates for 35 years. As this area of the city has been developed, the quality and safety of living here has diminished. This is a serious traffic bottleneck of traffic at the intersection of Charles and Fire Tower Road, as well as Fire Tower and Arlington. Traffic on Charles has become loud and there are many accidents in this area. I believe that this development will cause an escalation of such problems. Sadly, after leaving Cary many years ago, I can say planning here is short sighted. Traffic flow has always been poor and the developers seem to control city politicians. By the way, why weren't the streets uptown improved when all the push was taking place to lure upscale businesses here? I would like to speak documentation of the need for this development, which includes information on percent of unleased properties available already, as well as an impact on traffic flow, noise, and the environment. Concerned citizen Sue Owen. Next email, this email is a comment for the public hearing regarding the rezoning request by Bobby Joyner for 7.426 acres located on the south side of East Fire Tower Road. Road east of Kitchell Road to OR Office Residential High Density Multifamily. The Taff Mills Group has submitted a preliminary application with the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency to develop 72 units on this lot. The neighboring homes still feel this is a dangerous development for the current roads and now is a bad time to develop these lands. The last time, this time last year, the city council approved the rezoning of the lot across the street and now 80 units of apartments will be built. It would seem unlikely construction even begins on these roads in time to accommodate more development. We, the neighbors, were told repeatedly that there were no current plans to develop the land and so it cannot possibly outpace road development. Granted, it was unforeseeable, but changes from the DOT regarding which corridor to start construction on this project and DOT budget freezes will be delaying expansion of this particular corridor for several years. Moreover, we were simply lied to. Current plans are in process and the engineering firm and attorney who usually work for major developers decided not to share with neighbors at our meetings. They do reference attachments which were forwarded to the city council. Page two of the attachment title, 2019 pre-app web list contains the information for Dustin Mills from Taff Mills Venture Group for 20333 East Fire Tower Road. This preliminary application was published by the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency on January 18th, 2019. I am not sure if the city council was kept ignorant during the decision-making process, but it was never mentioned at the city council meetings to allow for proper transparent discussion. Once the lot is rezoned, there's very little say of any of the neighbors or city council can have in development of this land. Our biggest concerns are traffic safety. Construction on the current road will lead to more accidents in front of our neighborhoods, whether this occurs before or during development of these lands. All people that are driving home to their units on the north side of East Fire Tower will be making a U-turn in front of our neighborhood to gain access to their complex. The attachment titled U-turn. The developer currently has no plans to utilize the new traffic light that is meant to ease congestion at the Charles and Fire Tower intersection and surrounding areas. Anyone coming from town who lives on Fire Tower, down Porter Town, and out towards the neighborhoods east of Porter Town will be using this light, which will now have two apartment complexes next to it. This will create a dangerously congested intersection close to our neighborhoods. In closing, I want to reiterate that we are not against development, we are for smart development and the safety of our neighbors, our friends, and neighbors. I thank you for the time you've taken, and that's time.
Madam City Clerk, did you state the names of the persons who wrote the letters? I may have missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I may not have, uh, that was submitted by Nikki Cootieses, I'm sorry if I butchered that last name.
You may want to read the adri, the names and addresses of the persons who submit, whose letters you wrote, who, whose letters you read, you may want to indicate their name and address.
Okay. The name for that one was Nikki Cootieses and there's not an address associated with it. Um, next email is from Tim, or excuse me, Tom Radicki, and he is a resident of 207 Field Street, Greenville, 27858. Dear Mayor Connolly and City Councilmembers, I am aware of the request to rezon 7.4 acres of land on East Fire Tower Road owned by Mr. Bobby W. Joyner to high-density multifamily that is on the agenda for the next city council meeting. This zoning request is in addition to the 12 acres the city council approved to be rezoned in 2019. As a longtime Cherry Oaks resident who frequently travels on Fire Tower, I hope the city council denies the request, at least until the Fire Tower Road widening project is complete. Adding additional traffic to a road that is well beyond capacity is not in the best interest of Greenville residents. The projected increase of 453 daily trips may seem small, however by itself that number does not paint an accurate picture of the potential impact of increased traffic on Fire Tower Road. Along with the increase of 453 trips, the initial rezoning request in 2019 was projected to add 1,050 trips per day for a combined total of 1,503 trips per day. Adding 1,503 trips to a road designed to accommodate 12,000 trips per day is a substantial increase. Stated differently, Fire Tower currently has 23,815 trips per day, from what I understand. Adding 1,503 trips per day would result in the road going from approximately 190% to approximately 204% over capacity. However, numbers don't tell the entire story. The impact of additional 1,503 trips on a road, on a road that is over capacity is unknown. Adding additional traffic has the potential to be the straw that broke the camel's back. From a Greenville resident who has seen multiple car accidents on Fire Tower, additional traffic may result in road safety going from bad to worse. Increased traffic will possibly result in gridlock during peak traffic hours and negatively impact the quality of life in nearby Greenville residents. Given the impact of increased traffic volume on an overloaded road is unknown, a prudent decision would be to deny the request and reconsider rezoning after the Greenville Fire Tower project is complete, or at least accept responsibility for any negative impact caused by additional Fire Tower traffic prior to the road widening project. The timing simply isn't right to approve rezoning. If the property development precedes Fire Tower widening, traffic and safety issues would be exasperated until the Fire Tower Road widening is complete. When Fire Tower is under construction, traffic flow will be negatively impacted. Adding additional traffic to Fire Tower through rezoning would only make a bad situation worse while road construction is occurring. Engineer working on this project noted this is an ideal location for high-density residential property due to the proximity to shopping and restaurants on foot travel. While that may be true after the Fire Tower Road widening is complete, it is not true now. It simply is unsafe, and that's time.
Do we have any other, um, comments?
Um, there's two more emails.
Okay.
This is from Crystal Beatty, resident of 302 Eleanor Street in the Cherry Oaks neighborhood. Greenville City Councilmembers, I'm writing to ask you to deny rezoning 7.426 acres located on the south side of East Fire Tower Road adjacent to Kitchell Road from RA 20 to OR. Please consider the density estimates and the detriment to roads already overwhelmed in the area. Under the current zoning, the site could accommodate 14 single-family residences. Under the proposed rezoning, the site could accommodate 83 to 89 multifamily units, one, two, and three-bedroom. The anticipated build-out is within two to three years. I request a moratorium on a rezoning and development in this area at least until Fire Tower is actually widened along with improvements to Kitchell Road and adjoining roads. Currently, the earliest Fire Tower improvements are projected, start is 2024 according to DOT-TIP, which means build-out takes longer. This is if no more budget issues impact DOT in the state. This timeline doesn't align with the proposed development timetable. Also, Kitchell Road is a cut-through service-type road that is not currently engineered to handle additional traffic that would come from development. Significant changes will be made at the intersection according to the DOT plan. That coupled with the construction of Fire Tower will be a giant headache for anyone living in the area already. Already, the best way to get out of Cherry Oaks during rush hours is to go out on Bell Forks instead of attempting Fire Tower. Bell Forks is a dangerous rural two-way lane road without curbing. In addition, there is dangerous intersection at Charles and Bell Forks to navigate. Numerous traffic accidents have occurred there. Any development will exacerbate those issues. Please also consider the lack of road safety installations like crosswalks, sidewalks, et cetera, in addition to the 80 units next to the meeting place that council has already approved to be built across the street. Another apartment complex would impact not only Fire Tower Road, but Highway 43, Charles Boulevard, and 14th Street. The 14th Street improvement project has also been pushed back at least until 2024 on the DOT-TIP schedule. A larger concern is protection of existing neighborhoods and quality of life. As developers continue to eye vacant property, what is our council doing to maintain livability and quality of life for its residents? How far from Charles 43 will development be allowed to keep encroaching on our established neighborhoods along Fire Tower and down Porter Town? As the road improvements occur, this is a major concern because we don't want one of the prettiest, quietest areas in Greenville to be allowed to be forever changed like the sections of West Fire Tower and Greenville Boulevard in ten. You'll only need to look at those areas to see what not to do. Significant buffers such as berms and trees would be needed for adjoining neighborhoods because of increased lighting and noise from new, new development. Also, can the current water and sewer systems in the area handle additional users? Has an environmental study been done to consider existing drainage ditches in the area and the capacity to handle runoff? Finally, is now the time, there's a pandemic affecting...
All right. Do we have a more letter?
We do.
All right.
Okay, and this is the last one. Um, this is from Ms. Loretta Lee. She's a resident of 312 William Street in the Cherry Oak neighborhood. This is regarding new business public hearings, comments, my name is Loretta Lee, I'm opposed to the rezoning of the above-mentioned tract to OR, which would allow high-density multi, multiple-family use. I live in close proximity to this area and travel Bell Fork Road, Charles Boulevard, and Fire Tower daily. The Bell Fork area in general is extremely busy, traffic is constantly backed up from all directions, and it is impossible at peak periods. Even though redesign of the roads is planned on the Fire Tower widening project, the additional number of cars that will be pushed onto these roads with multifamily use of this tract is unacceptable. I implore the city council to consider adjoining single-family neighborhoods and deny this rezoning request.
All right. And that is the last, uh, comment that we have for, to speak in opposition.
It is.
All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now closed. And is there any other board discussion before we move on to the next, uh, public hearing?
Do you need a motion to recess this, or we just would do the one at the end?
I think we just, uh, Emmanuel McGirt, City Attorney, we just need to do a motion to recess at the end. I would just remind the, um, the mayor and the council that, to inform the public, the council anticipates, uh, adopting a motion to recess the meeting until May 18th at 6:00 PM, uh, and, um, to, to allow the written comment period to expire. All of the closed public, uh, hearings that I, that I heard this evening will be placed on that recessed agenda for consideration and possible action.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other discussion before we move on to the next public hearing? Seeing none? I'll call on the city manager for our next public hearing. You're on mute.
Got it, thank you. The next pu, public hearing is an ordinance requested by John F. Moy Senior Ayers to rezon 15.0936 acres located south of Greenville Boulevard between Allendale Drive and Dickinson Avenue, extension from RA 20 Residential Agriculture to R6A RU Residential, Restricted Residential Overlay. And I'll call Mr. Sevor, uh, I'm sorry, Sevior, is that right, Brad? Sevior?
Got it.
Got it, got it, thank you.
All right, um, yeah, so again, I'm Brad Sevior and I'm on the planning staff here with the city. Yeah, so this project is located in the southwest quadrant of the city and again, it's, the location is indicated, indicated by the red star on this map. This is an aerial, uh, photograph of the map and you can see that it's located really close to the intersection of, um, southwest Greenville Boulevard and Dickinson Avenue Extension. Here's a picture of the site, uh, you're looking at the site across southwest Greenville Boulevard, um, and you can see there's not really anything there. Uh, this survey shows the site to be around, uh, just over 15 acres. Again, the, the existing land use is, it's vacant on this property. Um, there, there's a little bit of different coloration on that because, uh, in that, that corner, that top-right corner, there is a single-family residence there and so the map just caught it saying this whole thing is single-family, but it's, it's, it's vacant land back there. Yeah, this property is not in the floodplain, um, it is in the Greens Mill Run, um, watershed and if there, if the, if the, sorry, excuse me, if the property was subject to stormwater regulation, we would require 25-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. Um, this project has potential to increase the trips on-site by 578 trips per day. And you can see it's very close to another community activity center at Dickinson and southwest Greenville Boulevard. Um, the existing zoning, the site could accommodate about 30 single-family residences and, um, with the rezoning request, it would be able to accommodate 65 duplexes, which is about 130 units. The, uh, future land use and character map, it shows that here you can see most of it's commercial and part of it's the traditional neighborhood, medium to high-density and, um, the request, um, to rezon it to the residential density of that is in line with that because we'd like things that are either as or less intense than the, the designation on the future land use map. Um, the request is in compliance with the Horizon's 2026, um, future land use plan as well as the, um, character map and so staff recommends approval of the request. And at their April 21st meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to recommend approval of the request by a margin of seven to one. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Sevior? Seeing none. Uh, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record, the first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Okay. First speaker that we have in favor is Mr. Rocky Russell.
All right, am I up?
Just need your video.
Thought I had it.
There we go.
Don't think I hit it again, sorry. There we go. I'm gonna keep some mute. Can you see me?
Um, not just yet. There, oh.
It's not working, for some reason I'm getting a warning message, uh, you need to start talking.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Connolly, city council members, city manager and staff, my name is Rocky Russell and I'm the petitioner for the rezoning request before you tonight. I am under contract with Mr. John Moy Jr. to purchase approximately 25 acres of parcel 15807. The total acreage in this parcel is approximately 90 acres. I have no current plans to purchase the remaining 55 acres of this parcel. I called Mr. Moy about three months ago and asked him if this proposal was, if this property was for sale, he said it was, and we negotiated a contract based on my ability to have the 25 acres rezoned to a duplex zoning. I contacted Shante Gooby and described to her my plans for this parcel and Shante stated the land use plan supported duplexes on the parcel. I move forward with the engineering work in process to appear before you tonight, at least by voice. Mr. Moy told, Mr. Moy told me that this parcel had been for sale on and off for 20 years or more. When I met with Ken Mapus, the engineer for the project, he indicated the land use plan would support a denser product than I was proposing, but I continued with the zoning classification that is on your agenda this evening. I have been a builder and developer for over 23 years, I have developed 10 communities in Pitt County, including four duplex communities. One of these duplex communities, Carroll Crossing, is almost 20 years old and remains a very popular community among owners who want to live in an affordable home. I developed and completed... I developed and completed Phase 1 of Philstone Duplexes approximately one quarter of a mile from Mr. Moy's property. The homes in this community were sold to medical and non-medical professionals, medical and dental students, and empty nesters. The homes in Philstone last sold for about $160,000 per side. I have a starter home, single-family neighborhood directly beside Philstone. Single-family homes in this neighborhood are selling for about $215,000. We need to provide home buyers different price ranges. Everyone can't afford a $215,000 or higher single-family home, or they don't want the responsibility that goes along with maintaining a single-family house. Duplex communities in Greenville have become very popular for the above reasons. The hospital area has four duplex communities that have been developed in the past 10 years. The majority of the homes in these communities have been sold, so inventory is very low. All of the communities that I've developed have been an asset, not a detriment to the community. I have built communities beside and behind churches. When I developed Hampton Creek on Davenport Farm Road, the pastor of the church gave me a stack of business cards to hand out to the home purchasers, so the church could offer their services in helping the homeowners move into their new homes. Approximately 11 acres was recently zoned high-density multifamily directly across from Greenville Boulevard from this property. There was very little objection to this multifamily zoning, which has a high probability of being rentals, so I'm perplexed why there are objections to a less dense product directly across the Boulevard. My proposed community's traffic will not empty out onto the single-family neighborhoods to the east of People's Baptist Church because my community is completely buffered by the church's property. Once the 55 acres behind my proposed community are developed, some of that traffic might have access to Allendale Drive. Greenville Boulevard traffic counts will support my community of approximately 58 duplexes. Stormwater detention will be incorporated into the design, an HOA will be established, and HOA will maintain the lawns, and my property management business will manage the HOA. At full buildout, this community will add about $18 million to the tax basis for Greenville and Pitt County. That translates into approximately a quarter of a million dollars annually in tax revenue for both municipalities. We presented our proposal to Planning and Zoning, and Planning and Zoning recommended approval of our rezoning request. I am confident the product that I will put in this location will be asset to the surrounding communities. The home values of my duplexes will be higher than probably every home on this stretch of Greenville Boulevard between Memorial and Dickinson Avenue. It is my understanding that People's Baptist Church had made normal offers to purchase some or all of the property before you tonight over the past few years. I was not aware of this history when I entered into a contract with Mr. Moy. Mr. Moy indicated he had spoken to the church about the property, excuse me, Mr. Moy indicated he had not spoken to the church about the property for approximately six months. Mr. Moy told me the church's offer was hundreds of thousands of dollars less than what he wanted for the property. With all this said, I do not believe prior real estate discussions with another party should be a factor in determining if my rezoning request is supported by the land use plan in city council. I am not Mr. Moy's real estate agent, but he has plans to carve out about three acres of road frontage that is next to the church, as well as 55 acres at the back of this parcel for a future sale to a third party, so there might be acreage available if the church needs to expand. I want to thank you for the time you've given me tonight, and will answer any questions you may have. Thank you again.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Russell? All right. Seeing none. Anyone else still like to speak?
Yeah. Yeah, I have a question.
Okay. Mayor Proton, what?
Okay. Mr. Russell, you stated that traffic will sometimes have to go out Allendale Road?
No, I said that, no, my, the 25 acres that I would eventually purchase if the zoning goes through is completely buffered by the church property, so there will be no, none of my traffic will exit on Allendale Drive. If the 55 acres behind my property is developed in some type of single-family or duplex or whatever, you know, that happens at that time, the city probably will require a curb cut that will direct toward Allendale, but my 25 acres will not.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Russell?
Actually, Mr. Russell, did you have some contact with the neighborhoods?
I spoke, after Mr. Moy spoke to the pastor of People's Church, Baptist Church, and Mr. Mrs. Outerbridge, who Mr. Moy said were some of the community leaders, I did speak to all three of those parties before the planning and zoning meeting, and shared with them, you know, my intentions for the property, being a duplex community, you know, for sale as I outlined in my presentation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Councilmember Daniels?
Mr. Russell, did you state that these, this would be rental apartments or homeownership?
This is, well, I can't control who's going to buy it, but my previous neighborhoods have been targeted for homeownership. I'm not, I'm not personally building it to rent out. For example, in Philstone, which is, it's about 100 units, I don't own a single home in there as a rental. Matter of fact, my daughter lived in one of them for about three years, and she recently sold it, and she's moving to the university, but, you know, I'm not targeting it as a rental community. It's duplexes for sale. These homes will, you know, sell for the $160,000, $170,000, and if you translate that into a rental price, that's probably $1,400 or $1,500 a month. That's a pretty strong rental price.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Russell? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker we have is Mr. Ken Malpus.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Ken Malpus. As was mentioned in the presentation, the proposed rezoning request is in compliance with the land use plan. As a matter of fact, the proposed rezoning is located within an area that is called out for commercial zoning. The potential developer of this tract, Mr. Rocky Russell, plans to construct duplexes on this property. The land use plan for the property just south of this requested rezoning is for traditional neighborhood high-density. The proposed rezoning to R6 RU is a low-density zoning request. The RU designation limits the development of the properties with this zoning to be developed into only single-family or duplexes, no multifamily development. The intent of this request for the lower density was to show the intent of the developer was not trying to do any multifamily development on the site above and beyond what would allow for single and duplex development. The requested R6A RU zoning lets all party knows, all the parties know that there is no multifamily housing allowed. As was mentioned, the current capacity of the road is about 77%, 77% of capacity, and to be minimal amount of traffic added to it. I would like to point out that this tract of land that People's Baptist Church is presently owned was a portion of the original Moy family farm that is being requested rezoning tonight. Two tracts were sold by the Moy family, approximately 15 acres in size back in 1975, and the church purchased an additional four acres back in 2001 for additional parking. In the 45-year time period the church and school has been in this area, they have added about 25% to their exist, to their original parcel that they owned. It should be noted that People's Baptist Church is located on a five-lane major thoroughfare, as are many churches located within the city of Greenville. If you look at the majority of the churches within the city limits, almost half or more are adjacent to multifamily development, commercial development, or both. This would be expected when you are located along a major road. Some of the larger churches in our community, such as Cornerstone Baptist Church, Rose Chapel Church of God, Trinity Frugal Baptist Church, Covenant Methodist Church, John Paul Catholic Church, Oakmont Baptist Church, and many others are adjacent to multifamily development, commercial development, or both. Due to the fact that churches within the city tend to locate along major thoroughfares, it should be understood and expected that the adjacent developments surrounding the churches would more than likely be some type of higher-density development than just a single-family home development. But as Rocky mentioned, the Moy property has been for sale for quite a while, 10 years or more. John Day had this property listed for many years, and actually his son was out front, so the property, it was well-aware to the church that it was for sale. It's my understanding that the church made an offer to purchase this property in the past, but the church was not willing or able to, was not willing to pay an acceptable amount to the Moy family. As a final point, it should be recognized how much of a lower rezoning request this is than what's on the land use plan when you're taking a piece of land that is shown as commercial zoning and asking for it to be zoned to single-family and duplex development only. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Malpus? All right. Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Malpus. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker that we have is Mr. John Moy.
Can you see me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I'm John F. Moy Jr., and I'm the owner of the property at 1719 Greenville Boulevard Southwest that we're discussing. And that is a farm that my dad bought in the 50s. He built that home. It's been my childhood home, family home. It's been my home for 61 years. And of course, I've seen it change more than probably any of you have from remember when it was country. But now, in the front yard, I'm looking at a Family Dollar store. I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying that the nature of the area has changed as Greenville's grown, this commercial interest in the area, and it's brought up, there's multifamily zoning was recently done right across the street from the site of my property there. And even myself, I own a commercial piece of property, highway commercial property where there's a modular home sales lot right across from People's Baptist and Red Oak Subdivision, which has done very well. It's a good long-term tenant for me, but a well-meaning property. But if we were today trying to get commercial, as the comprehensive plan shows on our land, I'm sure you'd hear how bad that is. I would ruin the neighborhood, how that it would cause traffic, drugs, crime, murder, all kinds of problems. But I have certainly a nice unit there. The Family Dollar store is not offensive to me. I go up there sometimes to buy things. So, but the point is, as far as single-family homes, there has not been any single-family developed in 40 years. So I think the use that Rocky has is something that will come up to be a very nice one, and it's been a very popular thing for some years, and usually you see now professionals, retired people, all sorts of people who want to live in a nice home at a reasonable price, but not inexpensive, not a cheap product, and they do not want yard maintenance. That's another thing, with the association that will take care of the yards for people. So retired people, single professionals, those working at the hospital, those kind of settings, it's been very good for them. When we came up with this, when Rocky approached me, I remember from years ago, in talking with the neighborhood in Red Oak, they did not want any multifamily. Some of the zoning designations allow that, so we went with one that prohibits multifamily development. So Rocky's straightforward, and what do you want to do? He's done a good job in building, and I think he will do a good job there. So we're really talking about which reason. You can make anything seem so bad if you want to, and I might hear about all the bad tonight, but this is a reasonable request, and I certainly hope that the city council will look favorably upon this and realize it's a good use for the park.
Thank you, Mr. Moy. Any questions for Mr. Moy? Seeing none. All right. Thank you, Mr. Moy. Do we have anyone else that is registered to speak in favor of the applicant, Madam Court?
Uh, we do. I'm sorry, not registered to speak, but they've submitted a comment online or through email.
Okay.
Okay. This is from Mr. David W. Robuck. He's a resident of 1815 Greenville Boulevard Southwest. And I will start the timer now. I am sending this message in regard to the John Moy rezoning hearing, just in case I cannot figure out the online live application. I have lived at 1815 Greenville Boulevard Southwest, Greenville, North Carolina, 27834 for nine years. I see no reason to disapprove the request. I feel it will bring positive economic development and a financial boost to this area that is much needed. With the upcoming widening of Allen Road and recent completion of the Greenville bypass, roadway issues should not be a problem. Thank you, David W. Robuck.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is that it?
Yes.
Other than that, okay. All right. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
First registered speaker that we have is Mr. Tim Butler.
Can you hear me? Are we good?
Yes, I can hear you, but we don't see you. There you are.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you giving us this opportunity during this difficult time for our community, our state, our nation. Thank you for facilitating this meeting. I'm Tim Butler, and I'm the pastor of People's Baptist Church and the president of Greenville Christian Academy. And during this nine years that I've been in Greenville, I've had limited interaction with this body. The interaction, however, has had one thing in common, and that is the safety and welfare. I was present at the meeting in council chambers when the land across the street from Greenville Christian Academy was rezoned a little over a year ago. I had great concerns that an entrance and exit would be allowed on the Greenville Boulevard, which would create a major traffic concern and hazard for our school families during pickup and drop-off times, once the proposed apartment constructed. Prior to the meeting, I spoke with Ken Malpus, who happened to be designing a turning lane for us at that time, and Ken assured me an entrance and exit would not be on Greenville Boulevard from the proposed apartment complex. My safety concerns were satisfied, and I saw no need to oppose the rezoning across the street. Couple of years ago, I reached out to this body requesting a resolution of support for a turning lane onto our school campus here on Greenville Boulevard. And once again, this was a safety issue, and this body unanimously voted for the resolution of support. The state put in the turning lane, and now parents feel safer turning onto our campus at drop-off and pickup times. Tonight, I'm before you again to express our concerns and their around safety and public welfare. It's important you know, we are for progress in our community. We have watched with amazement, pride, and support at the progress of our city under your leadership. We are for progress, but not at the expense of safety for our schoolchildren. The rezoning request before us tonight has created some controversy. While this proposal meets the Horizon 2026 Plan use, I wish to implore the council to consider the special place schools occupy in our community. I would tell you on behalf of the residents of Red Oak Subdivision, they already feel like they take their life into their hands when trying to make a turn, a left turn, onto Greenville Boulevard. Traffic is an important issue with schools in particular. The speed limit itself is reduced in school zones during pickup and drop-off times. This underlines how important the community views school zones. There are also laws providing for gun-free and drug-free campuses, special traffic laws for school buses, and schools are required to have a special use permit to operate. All of these laws underline how special schools are to the community and to society as a whole. Please take into account the special place Greenville Christian Academy occupies in the community as you consider this request. I would urge you to review any comments you perceive from people living in surrounding areas such as Red Oak Subdivision, and let them tell you about their feelings regarding the rezoning. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, the folks in opposition are not able to be present. Therefore, it is even more important that the council take their time with this request and review any and all public comments, emails, and any other ways in which the people have expressed their opinion on this request. to our campus each week in participation of upward sports, that they have signed a petition stating their opposition and please consider their voices when you consider this request. I would tell you that the parents of Greenville Christian Academy are concerned about this rezoning request as the increased density of people beside GCA leads to a greater risk and opportunity for traffic accidents and congestion, especially during drop off and pickup times at the school and during sporting events at the school. The more people congregated together allows for a greater opportunity for crime to occur. I would tell you on behalf of the senior adults that are part of the ministry of People's Baptist Church and attempt to turn left on the Greenville Boulevard at great personal risk due to traffic, they're very concerned about their own public safety if more traffic is added. The real need tonight, though, is not a granting of this rezoning request. The real need tonight is we need each other now more than ever. The city council needs the church and the church and the school need the city council. We are a great team when we work together. We make our community better. Problems get solved. We move forward together. That being said, People's Baptist Church stands for reasonable development. We are hopeful that the city council will deny this request. However, in the event the city council approves the petition, we're asking that at least the city council consider providing a zoning buffer allowing only single family homes between Greenville Christian Academy and the zoning allowing for more dense development. This will alleviate many of the issues that Greenville Christian Academy and People's Baptist Church is concerned with. Now, thank you for your consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Pastor Butler. Any questions for Pastor Butler?
How are you doing, Pastor Butler? Any questions for?
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Pastor Butler. Anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first, uh, you have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Mr. Paul Ains.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you, but cannot see you.
Okay, uh, I see the, uh, there's a slash through the start video.
Can you try that again?
All right. There you go. You're good. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address some concerns that I have with the proposed rezoning of this piece of property adjacent to Greenville Christian Academy. I'd like to speak in opposition to the ordinance by rezoning. My name is Paul Ains and my wife and I, we moved from here last 22 years ago. We made this community our home. During the years that I've been in Greenville.
Mr. Ains, if you have a TV running, you might want to mute your TV.
My wife and I, we have six children and all six of our children graduated high school from GCA. Currently, I'm a full-time high school graduate at the academy and I feel that we have, that I have real investment in this school. And that leads me to some serious concerns that I have with potential changes to the neighborhood. I feel that the proposal for rezoning the adjacent property would result in an inevitable increase in traffic on Southwest Greenville Boulevard, very close in proximity to the entrance onto the property of our school. This turn lane is critical for the safety of hundreds of parents and students who follow the drop off and pickup lanes throughout the week at GCA. As it is, if you're turning left out of the church parking lot onto Greenville Boulevard, depending upon the time of day, it can be a challenge to get into the center turn lane in order to merge and continue heading west. This potentially could be the same location where dozens and dozens of other cars would be merging into the center of the turn lane to enter the proposed subdivision. My greatest concern that I will address is the safety of our students on our campus. I do not believe that the best choice for the location and construction of this proposed dwellings is right next to a ministry where throughout the school day, children are outside at recess on the playground, where students from our school and visiting teens are participating in athletic events well into the evening hours, and where many Saturday mornings, hundreds of children and their parents are participating in the upward sports programs that our ministry facilitates. Prior to teaching in the classroom, I served as administrator of GCA for more than 17 years. GCA has continued to operate for more than 50 years through the support of our sponsoring church, People's Baptist Church, and the willingness of hundreds of parents to pay the monthly tuition bills in order to provide their children with this education. The reason that parents choose GCA and pay for their children's education through tuition fees is because they know that when they drop off their kids here, they are safe and they are loved. I truly believe that these parents have entrusted to us their most prized possessions, their children. In this world that we live in, it's hard to put a price tag on security issues and school safety. This is the main reason I'm speaking to you. I would ask you to take this into consideration this year because this decision should not be made on the basis of potential revenue and development of property. I believe this decision should take into consideration the impact this could have on the lives of hundreds of students and parents. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my concerns.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Brian Myer.
All right, Councilman.
Mr., yeah, thank you. Uh, so Mr. Ains, I heard you and, uh, and, uh, Mr. Butler discussed the safety and the traffic. Um, what would make this work for you guys? Do you guys want to see a reduction in the speed limit there? Would a traffic light in that area, uh, make this more palatable for you guys? What, what from a traffic standpoint would you guys be looking for to alleviate your concerns and to help the, the parents and then make you feel that the, uh, the children are safer getting that in and out of your campus?
You know, I don't know the exact answer to that, Councilman. I think a study maybe should need to be done there. Um, the concerning thing is the people from Red Oak and then also are, uh, are particular. You know, from my perspective, it's the left turn in particular out off of the property. And I do know that, that speed limits, uh, reductions I think have helped, but, um, but it has certainly not eliminated the problem in particular during the, uh, drop off and pickup times.
Mayor. Mayor.
Uh, Mayor Prince and Glover.
Okay. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, but, um, the traffic, um, um, the traffic study has already been done and, um, the speed limit is set to be reduced from 50 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour. Um, and that is some information that I received from our, um, city traffic engineer's office today. And, um, so the stoplights, uh, Pastor O'Neil says they have helped her tremendously as far as getting in and out, you know, in a, in a, in a good time. Um, so there is no, um, that is, is, um, to Mr., um, to, um, the minister and, um, that is something that you can get from our public works office, uh, engineer's office. And it has the information on it about how many cars will be added to, um, the streets, um, um, and, um, how many, um, trips will be made by additional cars. And it is only, uh, a 1% increase in additional cars.
That's encouraging news to hear. Um, I think our biggest concern also is the, from this proposed development to the proximity of the entrance and the exit of that, uh, to this, to this new development is going to be right there so close to our, our entry and exit for the school. And, um, I don't know how to, to negotiate that. I really don't. We've had to eliminate the left turn during certain hours and I talked to Bishop O'Neil and they've done the same thing because of the, the massive amounts of turning, uh, traffic there. When you try to turn left there, at, at certain times, it's just almost impossible. And with senior adults in particular, it's a grave concern.
Councilmember Litchfield.
Uh, Pastor Butler, um, is, is the street right there in front of the school, is that considered a school zone? So cars are slowing down during school hours?
Yeah, but it's, it's supposed to and, uh, but it's still like Mrs. Glover was talking about, it is still at 50 miles an hour. And during the, the school times, it's, um, it doesn't get much lower than that, to be quite candid with you.
But, but there are signs that say school zone and, uh, vehicles should be slowing down to the 35 or 25 mile per hour zone. Is that right?
They should be, but it just simply doesn't happen. And I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's 35 even. Um, I don't think it's that low. I don't think that's been posted. If I'm not, I'm almost positive it hasn't.
Um, city manager? Um, in the city limits, do we post, uh, school zones, speed limits to 35 or 25? You're muted.
They're, they're typically posted 10 miles an hour under the, the regular posted speed.
And does the city do that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I would like to add that, uh, the, the speed limit currently flooding this site is 50 and the state has an ordinance which they're waiting the city to sign, which extends that 50 to Holiday Court. So, uh, I, I think what Ms. Glover said as far as it's going to be reduced to 45, that is not true. Um, it's, it's the ordinance, the ordinance states that it's going to be extended, that 50 mile an hour speed limit will be extended to Holiday Court, which is east of here. So it's 50 and it's, and the state plans to make it stay 50 once this ordinance is signed.
Um, mayor?
Mayor Prince and Glover.
Um, yes. Uh, I actually looked at the engineer's report and, um, so I think we have a little misunderstanding here because, um, the people in Oakdale and, um, they had requested a 45 mile per hour speed limit. So you're saying that it doesn't extend all the way to, um, the church?
Yes, ma'am.
Beyond the church?
Based on that request, the state did, did a speed study out there and then they summarized their study and they defined the line going, uh, the, the line of demarcation from 50 to 45 is going to be Holiday Court.
Mm-hmm.
So it would be 40, it would be 45 miles per hour from Memorial West to Holiday Court and then it would be 50 from Holiday Court out to the, uh, to the west through Allen Road. Cause that's what that would be as well.
Okay. Um, before, uh, that wasn't, uh, considering, um, the, um, rezoning and the school?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, so, um, is that what we requested from the state to change the speed limit?
We did not request. The state did the study. The state sent us a letter to, to, to accept that change in ordinance, speed ordinance based on their study. And I did talk with the DOT today about this project and I said, there may be a request to move that speed limit line.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
To encompass this footage.
Okay. All right. And also, um, you said that the city would, um, put up the signs near the school, um, you know, the whatever's necessary for the schools. You said that's the city's responsibility or is it the state's responsibility?
It's the city's responsibility on a city road. That's, that's the.
Is that the state's, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ains? Cause we got to finish up the public here and we can, we can open up for, for discussions.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'll jump again.
That's all right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Ains? All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak, uh, in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Um, the next speaker we had registered was Ms. Barbara Murray, but she has since said that she will not be able to make it with us. So the next speaker would be Ms. Betsy Gray.
Are you there? Are you there?
Mm-hmm. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, first of all, I want to thank all of you for your time and your commitment to our community. Uh, my name is Betsy Gray and I'm a member of People's Baptist Church and I am here tonight to ask you to vote no on this rezoning request. I love my community, Greenville, North Carolina, and I know that this city council also loves and wants the best for the city of Greenville. Greenville Christian Academy has been educating children in this community for 50 years and these graduates are all over our community, contributing in positive roles as police officers, teachers, business owners, physicians and judges. Greenville Christian Academy recently received one of the highest national accreditations possible. We have a vision for the future for these bright, young minds and this vision was potentially would be entered if this rezoning request is approved. It is a given fact that higher density equals higher crime. Greenville became my home soon after becoming a 79 ECU alumni and I have enjoyed seeing Leo Jenkins's dream come true and having a son graduate from ECU with a business degree, staying in his hometown and starting his business here because he loves Greenville. Yes, I want grace for this city, that sensible grace and measured grace. Just because an area meets the land use criteria does not mean the land should automatically be used that way. There are other factors that the city should consider, specifically the city should consider the special place schools occupy in our community. There are special laws protecting schools, for example, during pickup and drop off times, the speed limits are reduced. And it's also important to remember that zoning law is a policy decision and the people's voices should be considered. If 450 citizens disagree with a zoning change, the city should take these voices into account as the people's voices should influence policy decisions by the city. Your decision tonight is really important. If the city decides that the current proposal is in the best interest of the city, then we are asking the council to at least consider providing a zoning buffer which only allows for single family homes between GCA and more dense development. This will alleviate some concerns and will certainly reduce traffic and will provide a reasonable transition between the school and more dense developments. Leo Jenkins's dream come true, and having a son graduate from ECU with a business degree, staying in his hometown and starting his business here because he loves Greenville. Yes, I want growth for this city, that sensible growth and measured growth. Just because an area meets the land use criteria does not mean the land should automatically be used that way. There are other factors that the city should consider. Specifically, the city should consider the special place schools occupy in our community. There are special laws protecting schools. For example, during pickup and drop off times, the speed limits are reduced. And it's also important to remember that zoning law is a policy decision, and the people's voices should be considered. If 450 citizens disagree with a zoning change, the city should take these voices into account as the people's voices should influence policy decisions by the city. Your decision tonight is really important. If the city decides that the current proposal is in the best interest of the city, then we are asking the council to at least consider providing a zoning buffer, which only allows for single-family homes between GCA and more dense development. This will alleviate some concerns, and will certainly reduce traffic, and will provide a reasonable transition between the school and more dense developments. Please remember the special GCA occupies in your community, and we hope that this council uses its wisdom to make the best decision for the community and for Greenville Christian Academy. And again, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Any questions for Ms. Gray?
Mayor, Councilmember, have a comment? You've been on the Garrett City Attorney. I've heard several speakers talk about a buffer for single-family homes between the church and the proposed parcel for rezoning. I don't think that's lawful in a general use zoning district like Greenville has. We don't have conditional zoning districts. I would ask for the planners also to speak on that as well, but I don't think we can, in approving a zoning map amendment, you can add conditions like some type of buffer.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant, can come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Mr. Freddie Outerbridge.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, Mr. Outerbridge, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you can hear me, because that's what I want you to hear. Let me your ears, not necessarily to see me. I hope, I hope every one of you are doing fine and staying healthy, but I, my main concern is my neighborhood that I live in, and, and one of, my number one reason, and I heard it already, is traffic. Traffic. It's about traffic. We're going to have a very difficult time with traffic. We're already having traffic, even though it has been stoplight placed near the, according near tourist, since that stoplight has been placed there, seeing that the speed of the automobiles have picked up speed. When you're talking about 50 miles an hour, it's always that, 50 miles an hour, those cars are going faster than 50 miles an hour. If you come out there and observe, and see that today's people don't respect law, they don't look at the law. You can see that for your own self now, about the law, respect for the law. If you put 50, 45, those people are going to speak. It's up to the person to have common sense, as a school to school, we need to slow down and protect our young people and our citizens. And another thing I look at, observe, is also that turning lane is a very, when you look at a turn, we have people out there walking in that turning lane, because they have no other way to walk. Even seeing young people walk, pushing up, baby carriers in it. That is very dangerous. Now, so let me think about our neighborhood. The second thing I want to mention is the proposal about, if this proposal will, how it will affect Red Oak residents. Now, I heard two things tonight, and I have talked to the builders that want to build that, said that it will be multi-family homes. Not multi-family, I'm sorry, duplex. But tonight, I already heard that it will be rented property, possible, possible rent. That's the first time I, I talked to Mr. Moore, and also personnel who want to build. This is the first time I heard possibility, rented homes. But I'm concerned, what you put at that, have that respect for this neighborhood. Thank you for your attention.
Excuse me, I just would like to interject real quick. Brad CBR, planner, just a reminder that there's, you know, you have to, you can't just consider one of the potential uses, you have to consider the broad range of uses found in a zoning district. And for this, duplexes aren't the only thing allowed. Single-family residences are also allowed in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CBR.
Thank you.
Outerbridge.
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Outerbridge? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant, can come forward, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Ms. Lillian Outerbridge.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me?
Good afternoon.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I really had decided I wasn't going to speak, because I've been listening to everything that has gone on tonight, and they've said pretty much what the people of Red Oak think and feel. We've been out here in this community for 32 years, my husband and I, and we moved out here with the intention of retiring and making this a comfortable retirement area. We do not want to see an excessive amount of people. There are a lot of singles that live in this neighborhood. We don't have the traffic to get to the buses. We have to walk to get to the city bus, so we have that concern too. And in addition to the traffic, turning, that problem, and as someone said, there's no such thing as 50, 50 miles an hour, unless a law enforcement officer is out here observing, because most of the people that drive out on Greenville Boulevard go more than 50 miles an hour, a lot more than 50 miles an hour. So when you decide that you wanted, want to improve, increase the number of people living in this area, you have to consider that. And I do hope that the city council will look at it from all perspectives. My husband and I talked about this a lot, we talked about it a long time, and we know Mr. Moore has talked with us, so we appreciate that. But we want to be upfront and honest, and we want to say, look out for the communities that already exist here before you make a decision. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Outerbridge. Any questions for Ms. Outerbridge? All right, thank you very much. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant, may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has, actually, you have three minutes.
Next registered speaker is Mr. Jack Brock. I will just note that he did send an email that he is here to speak, and that email was shared with the city council.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Brock, and I'm an attorney representing Peoples Baptist Church and Greenville Christian Academy. The church and GCA fully support reasonable development, and feel the current rezoning petition is not reasonable, and opposes the petition. I don't want to repeat everything that representatives from the church and GCA have already repeated, but I do want to speak to the city attorney's comment that a transitional buffer, conditional zoning is not allowed. I think what the church and GCA is proposing as far as the transitional buffer, is that in the event the city council is inclined to grant the petition, instead of granting the petition, we're requesting that the petition be denied, and the petitioner be suggested to perhaps reapply with two separate zones. One zone contiguous to GCA being something like a R9S district. That's what other developments around the area are currently. And then having the more dense R6A RU contiguous to the R9S. So the R9S district would act as a buffer. That would cut down on traffic, that would cut down on a lot of the concerns that GCA and the church have already proposed. And I think that that would solve a lot of, lot of issues. The church feels like this is a reasonable request, and reasonable compromise that could solve the community's concerns. We are requesting that the city consider this rezoning petition in light of the fact that a school which has served the community for the past 50 years is adjacent to the proposed rezoning and future development. I'll cede any additional time to questions.
Any questions, Mr. Brock?
I have one.
Councilmember Smiley?
Could you speak a little more as to why you think R9S would be a, you know, is the density in an R9S really that much lower? I mean, is it going to generate that many, that, so many fewer, so much fewer traffic that it would have a meaningful impact on the, on the concerns that have been expressed?
R9S is lower. They are single-family residences. Rosewood is R9S, and the church and the school have had a good experience with everyone that lives in Rosewood and that community. The concern, one of the big concerns is, and I've got a couple of numbers written down, under the proposed zoning, R6A RU, the whole 15 acres could accommodate 65 duplex buildings, which is 130 single-family dwellings. One fear is that there's a, a total acreage is 90 acres. And so if you multiply that out to the whole 90 acres, that's a significant number of people. I know that that's not before the board tonight, but the idea is if we go ahead and put two separate zoning districts, and that can alleviate some of these density concerns. Does that answer your question, Mr. Smiley?
Well, I wish you'd finished, finished the argument that, you know, there's, you know, that, and use the amount of acreage we're talking about here. So if you, if what, how many acres of R9S are you talking about? And how many fewer residences is that? And how much fewer, how much less traffic is it? You made an argument, do the math, finish the argument.
What, what we are requesting is several acres from the property line of Peoples Baptist Temple over. And so if I do my math right, and, and the reason I went to law school is so I didn't have to do math, but if I do my math right, let's see, I think, I'm not a mathematician, and this is something I could submit after, within the 24 hours, but if we do it right, I think you could reduce the density by maybe 25%. Don't hold me to that. I can follow that up with some, an email to the city council within the 24 hours, that's allowed, if that is sufficient.
And you think that would have a meaningful impact on the traffic questions that people have been, that are the principal objections we've been hearing?
I don't, I don't think...
That solves the traffic problem?
I don't think it completely does. I think that if you add that with a reduction in speed limits, and also a more strict enforcement of the school zone, you heard Pastor Butler speak as to that. Apparently, there's not a strict enforcement of that. I think all of that together would work to solve that problem. Another issue that Pastor Butler didn't mention was that the school does have sporting events, and so there is also a potential need for city police to facilitate ingress and egress for sporting events. So I think all of that will have to work together, a synergy, if you would. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Brock? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looks like we have time for maybe one more speaker. Anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to the applicant, may come forward. You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
All right, last speaker that we have is Mr. Michael Lopez.
Hello, mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak today, and for hearing our concerns. My name is Mike Lopez. I am the school administrator here at Greenville Christian, and it's my privilege to oversee over 200 students and over 30 team members each, each school year. A large part of my job, obviously, is to ensure a proper education, and as someone mentioned already, we do have high accreditation status there. Another heavy responsibility I carry, obviously, is school safety as well. And so when school is in session, when it wasn't in session, I gave tours to prospective families several times a week, often every single day. And one of the first questions that parents ask, really above all else, is in regard to school safety. This is their first concern, and this is my first concern as well. A higher population density right beside a school could, could increase the risk of potential crime. We have an athletic complex that's rather large with open fields and equipment. We have an after-school care program that has children playing outside on the school playground late into the evening. We also maintain a very busy athletic schedule year-round, which brings not only our high school fans, and student athletes, and, and others, but big guests and athletes from around our state. And having a higher population density has caused great concern with my constituents as represented within not only the petitions, but the emails as well, and also with our staff and faculty. My second concern is that more people on the roads could also increase the risk of a traffic accident. If you've ever driven by the southwest end of Greenville Boulevard during the school day, or really kind of drop off and, and pick up, it's, it's pretty wild out there, and can certainly get crazy. On a final note here, most, if not all of you, have children, and your children go to school somewhere, but when you drop them off, your desire is to drop them off free from worry of, of their safety, and that same peace of mind is really what we are greatly desiring to provide each family that attends Greenville Christian Academy. It's been that way for 50 years that we have existed, and we hope to leave it that way for another 50-plus years. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Any questions for Mr. Lopez? Saying none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is it. That is the, the public hearing is now closed. We're open for a board discussion before we move on to the next public hearing. Any questions for staff? Or discussion amongst ourselves?
I have one question for the traffic engineer.
Councilmember Smiley?
The, we've, we've done several analyses around town where we've, and at least at one school, where we've actually put in infrastructure to prevent left, left turns. Was that considered, has that analysis been done at this location?
No, sir. No, sir, no, it is not.
And those are, and though, but if I understand, those analyses were initially done at sites, you used data, I mean, there were sites where there had been accidents, and you were, you were looking at the places where there had been substantial exposed risk, correct?
Top-down priority, priority-driven, highest amount of intersection accidents down. So the top 10 list were the 10 highest intersections in the city that could be, those accidents could be correct, correctable by the delineator system. So that means left turn type accidents and right angle incidents. School, I can tell you this, school driveways, they're not even on the list, because there's so many priority intersections that have high incident, high number of accidents at each location.
Do you happen to have the, the accident data for this particular location at your fingertips? If you don't, we'll come back to it.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Any discussion amongst ourselves?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, Brian Meyerhofer.
All right, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
Rick, thanks for your time. Just a quick question for you. Is this area along Greenville Boulevard, is it or would it be a candidate for a stoplight? And if so, how would that work? Would that be in a state road?
With, with its adjacency to Dickinson, you know, being just to the west, and that is signalized, the state would never consider a traffic signal that close to that signal. And further, they would do a typical traffic warrant study. The traffic volumes coming out of a school would never meet the warrants. So it's a, it's a duplicitic answer that the state would give you to say, no, there won't be a traffic signal at that driveway, or at this driveway.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff or any discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Yes, and I, I also want to, since Ms. Murray could not be here tonight, Ms. Barbara Murray, she's the, she is the neighborhood liaison for the Oakdale community, and they are right there on that street as well. So, and I think there's something like seventy homes out there, and they're single-family homes. So we have to consider that community as well. And my feedback from the community basically is that they are, they're told one thing and another thing happens, and they're asking to respect the communities that are already there, that have been there years and years and years, you know, as well as anyone else would want, anywhere in the city of Greenville would like for their community to be respected and make sure that we're not doing anything that's gonna be negative to our community.
All right, Councilmember Lishfield?
Yeah, Mr. McGurk, you mentioned something about the dual zoning, I guess. It sounds like there is some desire by the church to have a compromise by having a single-family buffer, and then potentially, I guess, the remaining parcel, the, the, the other homes. Is that something that, that, that we can do? Can you expand upon that a little bit more?
Yeah, yeah. Greenville has, is a general, has general-use zoning, so we cannot add, the city cannot add conditions to a rezoning amendment. So it's not allowed, we just allow straight general-use zoning, whatever, whatever uses are allowed in that zone, the, the person who, who obtains that zoning could, could, you know, use, use any of those uses in terms of the activity on that property, but we, the city cannot place conditions like a certain type of buffer, besides the, the general buffers that may apply to all of the uses, but you can't have any specific conditions on, in a general-use district.
Good, thank you.
And can I add another comment on that?
Councilmember Smiley?
Just to make sure I understood, since he's off the call now, that the attorney Brock, I think, was suggesting that, you know, he wasn't suggesting that council had put on a conditional zoning. It sounded like he was suggesting that council request the applicant to submit two separates, a new map with two separate zones on it, but that would have to be something he would agree to do. We don't have that ability to impose that on him, if not under a normal practice that I, that I'm aware of.
I agree. And that, that would also trigger a new notice in a public hearing if, if, first of all, I think it's very unusual to amend a zoning request on the fly, and if the applicant desired to comply with that, they would have to go through a whole new process because that's a whole, whole other, a different application where the public would have a right to respond to that, that request and be notified.
That was my understanding as well. I just want to make sure that the, the proposal was fairly, was fairly represented.
All right. Either questions for staff or any discussions amongst ourselves before we move on to the next public hearing?
All right. Mayor, before we move to the next one, I would just again remind the, the council and the public that the council anticipates adopting a motion to recess at, at the end of the meeting until May 11th at 6:00 P.M. It will be a virtual meeting for the purposes of allowing any written con, the written comment period to expire. All of the closed public hearings will be placed on that recessed agenda, and again, any person pursuant to the new law may submit a written comment twenty-four hours after the public hearing.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is an ordinance requested by the Planning and Development Services Department to amend the city code by creating a new mixed-use institutional zoning district, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Savioar.
Hi, thanks. Brad Savioar here again. I'm a planner with the city planning department. What we want to do with this text amendment is create a new zoning district. We're calling it the Mixed Use Institutional Zoning District. This amendment is associated with ECU's Millennial Campus Project. Just a little bit of background, the, the Millennial Campus site currently isn't zoned in a way that would accommodate the, what they're proposing to do with the Millennial Campus, and also there's no existing zoning district in the city of Greenville that would accommodate what they want to do with that site. So we sat down with ECU and talked through this amendment, and we've come to a place where we feel like they can do what they want, and the city can have its interests looked after as well. So this on your screen is, is our, is our stated district purpose, and essentially what we want to do with this zoning district is allow a mixture of uses, that you could have, you know, shops, you could have offices, you could have residences potentially, but to do so in a way that, that places a real emphasis on office space, institutional space, and things like research and development instead of just a broadly commercial mixed-use development that you might be familiar with in other cities. So one particular quirk of this zoning district is that the petition, you know, the petitioners got to have the development under control of one single entity that is an institutional entity, so that would be like the university, it could be, the hospital could, could do a project under these rules if they petitioned for this zoning district and it was appropriate. The, the city might be able to do it, you know, large public institutions of that, that nature would be able to petition for this type of zoning district. This zoning district has different, different standards, some of them have reduced requirements, some of it's, you know, give and take kind of, you get a little more if you, if you, you know, give a little more on, on some other issues. As I said before, there's a focus on the office and institutional uses, that really more than half of the development would be focused in that direction with the way that the ordinance is written. So there are limited commercial and residential opportunities, but they're, they're certainly not going to be the majority of the development. Also, in keeping with this, we've had to create a, a new use code, so we don't really have a very good classification to fit a research and development facility in, on, and one of the expressed desires from East Carolina University and the developer is to have some research and development-type uses on the site. So we've created a new definition, a new use classification for research and development, and that is included in this proposal. So it's not just a new zoning district, it's also a new use code which is allowed in this zoning district. When you look at the Horizon's Plan, the Horizon's 2026 Plan, it specifically states in there that we want to work with ECU on the Millennial Campus uptown, and it talks also about creating new mixed-use zoning districts to accommodate these types of projects, and that new mixed-use zoning district, that's the number-one action implementation priority for our comprehensive plan. So getting this zoning district and potentially other mixed-use zoning opportunities into our ordinance is a very high priority for staff, so we're very glad to have this proposal for you today. If you have any questions, I'd be, oh, yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval at the April 21st meeting. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
In regards to the MUI zoning district, I understand that the impetus behind this was the ECU and Millennial Campus, right?
That's correct, yes.
With that being said, does that mean any and all parcels that will get the MUI designation will, we not be collecting property taxes on any parcel that's MUI?
I don't really know the ownership structure. That's really kind of strange. I would maybe ask that question of the other city attorney or the applicant, because I don't really know how the ownership structure on, on that works exactly. Manuel, do you know, are you aware of how the tax situation will play out on that?
I would defer to the applicant.
Mayor?
Yes, Madam Manager?
Just to confirm, this is the creation of the district? This does not rezone the property? That would be a, another action that would occur at a later date?
Yes, correct. We're currently targeting the June council meeting for the rezoning, and that would come, but that's, that's a separate action, yes.
So does anybody know, or is it a case-by-case basis whereby the, any and everything with MUI, we won't be collecting property taxes on, or it, we, there could be some scenarios where we are and some scenarios where we are not? That's to be determined?
For the Millennial Campus, I'm not, I, I don't know, but, you know, this doesn't necessarily, this isn't necessarily restricted to Millennial Campus. It won't have to have a Millennial Campus designation for someone to request the zoning. So conceivably, you know, the situation would vary depending on the project.
Council, Councilmember Meyerhofer, this property will be conveyed from the university to the developer, and it will be put back on the tax rolls.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Mayor Proton Glover?
Has ECU talked with all of the owners that are around this area that they're trying to get rezoned? Because I think it's good practice to talk with the, with the other landowners before the university comes in and do their own thing, and the other landowners around this area has no say in what's being done.
Again, Mayor?
Yep. Madam Manager?
Mayor Proton Glover, I, again, I think it's important to point out that this is creating the district, this is not rezoning the property. That might be something that the staff of East Carolina can, can consider when the rezoning comes before the count, before the planning board and the council in the next thirty to sixty days.
But we're still establishing the district.
You are, as a zoning district, yes, ma'am?
As a zoning district, but I still think that the other landowners around that particular area should, they should at least meet with them, and they have from now to June to meet with them before we just go ahead and, and approve this. I feel like other landowners around there should know what's going on and how it's gonna change. I think that these other landowners are taxpayers, and they're paying taxes on their properties, and ECU is exempt. So I think that we, we really need to talk to the other landowners. I know we have from now to June to do that, but if we establish this tonight, I mean, or Thursday night, whenever we're gonna vote on it, this will leave everyone out, and the zone has already been established, and they will have no say-so. That is what I am concerned about. It, it could possibly hurt their development or whatever their minds, whatever's in their minds to do with their properties that they have in that area.
If I may, I was actually contacted, this is, Meyerhofer, I was actually contacted by a property owner in that area and said they were notified about this. So I don't know how extensive the notification process was. I had a constituent reach out to me that owns property in the area and ask me about what the MUI designation was, so, so somebody was notified. I don't know how many, how many were notified, but I can tell you that I had somebody specifically contact me about it.
Yeah, Brad Savioar, city staff again. We, we notified for the rezoning already for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting is coming up, and so we've, so they're going to Planning and Zoning before they come here for the final rezoning in June. So we've received several inquiries from the neighborhood already, and what they're inquiring about is the notification they received for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
But my concern is, is that the other people in that area has a substantial amount of property, and if, if ECU, if we rezone this and create this zone for ECU, then we don't know how it's gonna affect the other people's property. I think that we're doing things quick in a hurry right now, which we should be doing things slowly because we don't want to, what we don't want to do is to shut some, and I did get a call from two of the property owners in that area. And their, their concern is that it's gonna affect their property, what they have planned with their properties, and they own a substantial amount of property in the area.
Right, and, Mayor?
Yes, Madam Manager.
Mayor Proton Glover, it's difficult to notify property owners because there has, because right now, what the council's going to do is create the district.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that.
Right, so when, right now, as soon as the council creates the district and the staff is in the process of notifying the, the potential adjacent property owners for the rezoning that will be considered by the planning board next Tuesday, and those owners of that adjacent property could then come to that, to the planning board meeting next Tuesday as well as a council meeting in June.
Well, it appears a little bit to me like we're putting the cart, the cart before the horse, because if we create this zone tonight, even though it's going to planning zoning to, you know, say what is good, what their, what their plans are, or whatever, I still think that a lot of times we have, we make mistakes in the city by rushing to do something, and when other people are, are hurt by our decision, and that shouldn't be, ECU has to be a good neighbor, and that's not what they do, they're not good neighbors.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Smiley?
If I can ask the city manager, if, now, I want to make sure I understand this. We're basically, what we're creating, you keep saying we're creating a district, but we're really just changing the, the, the zoning law of the city. There's no map footprint associated with that, this action today, right?
Right, I mean, when I say we're creating, we're creating this district, we're creating the ability for somebody to zone a piece of property to this zoning type. We're, we're not associating at this point, at this zoning district with a particular piece of property.
Yeah, anywhere, this basically says that this is now a zoning type that could be, that anybody anywhere in the city could apply, presumably there are restrictions on where, could apply to have their, you know, a particular parcel or collection of parcels zoned with this type, much like commercial or R-six or R-twenty. We know there is an intention of a particular applicant to apply in a particular place, but that's not what's, what's happening tonight. But tonight, we are simply creating the, the feature of the law that would allow somebody to, at a place to be determined, to be, but so that process that has, where you submit a map and you say where you want to do it, that's the one that's ongoing, that's gonna come later. that's the one that's ongoing, um, that's gonna come later, right? This particular one has, is not associated with any particular parcel or any particular place.
Correct.
Thank you.
So council member Smiley, this is a text amendment. The council has two types of actions it takes when it does zoning, map amendments or text amendments. So this item is making a text amendment, creating this district and apparently ECU plans to take advantage of that by going to PZ and presumably to council it, it, next month.
Okay, so, uh, I got one question for you. So this, this new district, I guess that's being created, how does this, uh, you know, how, how was this process formulated? Who was, who was a part of the discussion with it? And are there certain areas in our community that this, this district can be used? And I, I do know that it said that like an institution has to be a part of this, this type of development. So is that solely tied to, you know, like East Carolina University? Maybe like a fighting medical center?
Uh, yeah, it's not tied to any particular piece of property, but that, that institutional association does have to be there. And so, so it could be the university, it could be, um, it could be Vidant, it could be the city, it could be the state. There's, there's, you know, there's a wide range of op, of options, but the emphasis really is to have an office, an institutional, um, theme to any developments that would take place in this, in this district.
Was this modeled after any other communities? Or was this just something that was created here in Greenville specifically for this particular project?
Um, it wasn't modeled in any one piece on any other particular community, but it did take, um, certain elements from other communities, such as Raleigh and a couple other places that have similar type of developments where we looked at their standards and, and how they went about things.
Since it's a new district that's being proposed, this would be something that any other developer potentially could be a part of, let's say that they teamed up with, let's say, Carolina University somewhere else. Another developer could utilize this or potentially petition to have this be passed through the planning and zoning and then the county, the, the city council?
Anyone's free to request a rezoning if they have sufficient property rights.
So how long did this process take place? And I guess who did we contact, uh, besides the developer to formulate this particular zoning?
Um, this was, I don't, I don't recall the exact timeline. We've been working on it for the past several months, um, with East Carolina University. They approached us, um, either earlier this year or, or late last year, somewhere in that timeframe. And, and we've been going back and forth for several months to, um, to formulate this. And it's, it's mostly been staff and the university.
When we typically create a new district, do we just solely work with one developer? Do we also bring in, you know, public, get public feedback from other developers that might be able to utilize this or provide some feedback to how the zoning could be, um, implemented?
Yeah, so usually when you're involving stakeholder groups, you wanna have interested parties and there's a very limited range of, of, of parties who may be interested. I guess, um, an oversight would have been maybe not including the hospital in the process, but, um, but there's, there's not a very large menu of stakeholders when it comes to this. I don't, I've not been with the city long enough to know our typical procedure for creating a new zoning district, but, but really you wanna focus on, on those who may be most impacted by the regulations. And ECU is certainly, ECU and the city are certainly the, you know, probably the top two there.
What about, you know, as far as like a development standpoint? Do we ever bring in private sector developers that could potentially provide some feedback for the, uh, the new zoning?
Yeah, so, so concurrently to working on this, we've been working on more broad mixed use zoning regulations. So we've brought in a pretty wide, um, variety of folks from the development community to talk about mixed use zoning in general. And we certainly used some of the, um, things we learned there when we were going through this process. They weren't involved specifically with this text amendment, but we have been in conversation with the development community about getting mixed use development throughout the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Shante. Um, I might be able to, um, help a little bit. Um, we, uh, as a matter of fact, staff does have a mixed use district, uh, type of text amendment that's coming to PZ next week. It's gonna be coming to the council in June. Um, this is a mixed use district that has an institutional, uh, section through it where it is for use by institutional entities, but it does allow mixed use. Uh, this is something that would be available to, uh, Vidant or any other institutional, uh, entity if they would like to develop properties such as this. But we also have an upcoming mixed use district, um, that will also involve vertically mixing of uses as well that staff is working on too. So there's several different things, um, kind of in the works for us over in the planning division that involves, uh, mixed use. This one just happens to have, uh, an institutional, um, um, a, a component to it.
So is it something that we might be able to engage some of the private sector developers that might be interested in providing some type of feedback that may be a partner to something that might be built under these zonings? This particular zoning?
I think we're gonna have much more interest in the, uh, a mixed use district, um, that I have been working on. I have already, uh, been working with some of the stakeholders in the community. Again, that's, that is a more, uh, generic mixed use as opposed to again, having this institutional, um, aspect to it. That's something, um, that is in the pipe that we've been working on now. This is something where a, a private developer would need to partner with an institution in order to take advantage of this type of district that we're talking about tonight.
So I guess this would be more of a narrow concept and it's gonna be basically led by somebody like East Carolina University or Vidant Medical Center or somebody that would be categorized as an institution as opposed to a private developer coming in and taking the lead on a project and just developing it. So basically, there, East Carolina is gonna be calling the shots on this thing. And so they're the ones that are probably gonna have to provide the feedback, um, for the development.
This, this was certainly, uh, the, a development with, um, ECU again because it is an institutional entity for this kind of mixed use.
Okay.
So, Mayor, can I say something?
Thank you.
Um, so, um, Councilman Glover here. So, um, are we going to create a institutional district? Might as well say basically for ECU or Vidant or someone like that. That's not on the tax roll. We are going through the, the, um, COVID nineteen virus and, um, we are like all cities, uh, strapping for monies and we're going to create a district, an area that only institutions can be there, but don't pay taxes. Uh, if, if I- That doesn't make any sense because if they wanted to work with the, the, um, the landowners or the property owners in that area, they would have already talked to them. It's like they are going to build whatever they want to. They're not gonna allow anybody else to come in and build anything. Let's be for real, guys. We gotta think real. Instead of, 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 I know this is, this is a formality that we have to go through, but when it comes down to thinking real, let's think real. Because all the things that has been built all around the university, all that probably that the university owns, none of it is on our tax, on our tax, um, books. So we get no taxes. We don't get anything from it. We're gonna create, uh, a district for institutions that don't pay taxes and, um, we know that ECU brings a, a lot of, 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 uh, with their football games and all of that, um, to the city. But, um, the city doesn't, um, make any money off buildings that are going to be built. We're not looking forward as to how we're gonna come out of this, this hole that we're in due to the virus.
Ms. Cuddies?
Uh, I, I just wanted to interject, um, and not to get too specific, but in this particular aspect, uh, or with this particular project, um, the, the, uh, this project could come with office institutional uses. It also has retail and even a residential component if someone want to, will want to develop it that way. And the good news is, is with that, any of those types of developments would come back on the tax roll. So it would not be, uh, under a nonprofit institutional use. So that, this is actually going to help those things come back on the tax rolls.
If I live to be ninety years old, I will say, I told you so.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. The, uh, public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
First registered speaker we have is Mr. Merrill Flood.
Mayor, members of council, I'm gonna share a brief, uh, PowerPoint with you that'll go through some of the very questions that you've asked. Uh, with me is Bill Bagnell, who is also with, uh, East Carolina University in charge of facilities, as well as, uh, Tim Elliott, our development partner. The concept of innovation campuses is not a very new concept. It's been, uh, built throughout this country and it's well established. They're the intersections and collisions of talent, innovation, engagement and place. In addition, in addition to being opportunities of collaboration between universities, they are economic engines. So yes, they will be back on the tax roll. The Innovation and Research Campus for East Carolina University, uh, actually is authorized by the UNC Board of Governors, authorized by the Horace Williams Act. It's been under development since about 2015. This designation gives universities, uh, much more flexibility in working with private developers to bring forward these types of buildings and facilities and campuses and generate economic development for communities in which they're located. There are five, excuse me, six areas with over five hundred area, five hundred acres spanning more than a hundred miles in eastern North Carolina that are designated as millennial campus. So let's take a look at a few of those, uh, across the spectrum. Very first is the Outer Banks Campus. Uh, it's, uh, a little over two hundred acres now. Uh, it's actually led by ECU in partnership with NC State and, uh, UNC Chapel Hill. And it's focused on integrated coastal research and education and programming, uh, for coastal areas and residency. We have a greenhouse site that's north of the river, just north of North Green Street, uh, encompasses about seven acres and will be developed for cutting edge greenhouse and agricultural, uh, uh, research that helps with, uh, intelligence services and control devices in the areas of research. The Health Science Campus, which encompasses over three hundred acres, where we not only train, uh, healthcare professionals, but also work through a number of issues, health issues affecting eastern North Carolina and handling research and development, uh, for those interests, uh, for our, our constituents. The Strapped Arms Area is an area near the athletic complex. Uh, it encompasses more than seventy-two acres. It's designed to be sort of the next, uh, ideal area for mixed use development that would take advantage potentially of this zoning classification if approved tonight. The Uptown District, which is one area that, uh, you saw rezoning, uh, I guess earlier this year or at, at the end of last year, where we, uh, rezoned about nineteen acres of land, uh, to accommodate, uh, development projects there. One of such being a hotel that will be a long-term land, land lease, but those properties will go back on the tax roll, uh, once developed. The Warehouse District, which is anchored by the Life Science and Biotech Building, is really the very first of our, uh, projects that are in the Warehouse District and part of the Millennial Campus District. Uh, from that, in a short distance and a short walk, there's the, uh, Export Leaf Building, the American Tobacco Company and the Richard Hughes Building that are also part of this area along with several vacant properties. The idea is to work with a private developer, uh, convey these to the private developer and then receive these properties back once developed after a timeframe and create economic innovation and job opportunities in this community. These would be the areas of the first, uh, areas of focus. I mentioned the Export Leaf Building, the American Tobacco Company and the Richard Hughes Building. All of this accompli, uh, encompasses about twenty-two acres and would be the anchor of where we would like to seek the advantage of this new opportunity. Because of the cost and redevelopment of properties that are historic but are also in a modern urban footprint, this is where the collision begins. This amendment is the very first step in development of the innovation campus and continuing the transformation of the economies in eastern North Carolina and Greenville, taking advantage of the redevelopment work that already began back in 2006 that has been started and continues on to this day. These areas require a new look at existing and older, uh, approaches to zoning to create the opportunities because they are on razor thin margins to make them work. We have worked with your staff. We appreciate working with them. We have had contacts from several of the property owners, uh, in the area over time throughout the development of the concept back in 2007 when the millennial campus, uh, designation was first thought, but not, but first granted in 2015 by the Board of Governors. We will continue to work closely with the staff and with others in the immediate area as we go forward. At this point, we're asking for approval of the zoning classification to give us the opportunity to develop these areas, specifically the Warehouse District, in this fashion to create this area of innovation, entrepreneurship and economic development. With that, I'll leave, uh, some time for additional questions that may be available.
Any questions for Mr. Flood? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Flood. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Um, I have Mr. William Bagnell.
I'm, uh, here in support of Merrill and I can answer questions that are specific to, uh, to the facility's development if necessary.
Any questions for Mr. Bagnell?
I have a question, Mayor.
All right.
In this area, Clark Street and all that, there are residents there that still own their homes. And, um, what are the plans for the residents there that are owning their homes?
Our plans are not to encroach beyond 12th Street. That's the limit of our designation. That would be the limit of our request. We have no desire to purchase any of the residential homes in the area. Uh, we're not intending on being, uh, a, a neighbor that would be obtrusive nor do we have plans to purchase any of those properties.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I also have a Ms. Michelle Clements.
Hi, I'm Michelle Clements with the East Group. I'm just here to support Merrill and also answer any questions on the engineering survey side.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Clements?
Actually, I have a question for the team.
All right, Councilmember Smiley?
Maybe Merrill would be the best one to answer this. He understands certainly the, the history of the university's relationship with community and maybe will understand the, the import behind this question. When you say this, the university has no plans to purchase parcels adjacent to its current plans. Now, are you speaking with the full authority of the university here? Has this been, has the university adopted a formal policy? Or have the trustees discussed this or the chancellor where they are, that they can say that in perpetuity to these residences adjacent to this parcel that the university has no intention and will not develop an intention to, to, to acquire land there?
I can say that the designation for millennial campus does not extend past 12th Street. I, I know that there are no current plans and when I say current, within the next five to ten years to extend any additional, uh, property and buy any additional property. I mean, we are a state entity just as, uh, you know, NC DOT is and we're facing the same, uh, financial constraints related- and we're facing the same financial constraints related to COVID-19, as well as other financial issues right now. Twelfth Street is the boundary. That's the boundary that's been established by the Board of Governors, and without their authority, we wouldn't seek nor need additional properties for Millennial Campus, as we have other areas that need to be developed as well.
And as you know, I'm only bringing this up because I'm sure people who are watching this will remember this. And ten years from now, or fifteen years from now, I'm sure somebody will come to us and say, you know, hey, I remember back in the day when, you know, an ECU representative came on, came before council and made a statement like that. So I just wanted to make sure we were speaking as clearly as possible.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Ms. Clements. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant, please come forward. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
And the last speaker that we have registered is Mr. Tim Elliott.
All right.
Well, good evening, everyone. I appreciate that. I am a real estate development group out of Maryland. I'm working up and down the east coast with many institutions and universities. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't, it's a hard discussion this evening, because we're not really here as a developer to apply for a project vision or a project designation. This is an insertion into the code text that guides development. And while having said that, at the same time, I just want to really applaud Mayor Pro Tem. I mean, what is development but not for community at the end of the day? You know, we could put all the bricks and mortars we want, but if we don't do this for our citizens and for community, then it's really, it's, that's our philosophy, anyway. We, we as development people, we have worked with many institutions, and in fact, in Rock Hill, South Carolina, we're proud to say that we work with community there, and we received an international award from, from Global Award for the placemaking that we did, and our communities involve parks, rights of ways. At the end of the day, this designation, I believe, and is what this is about, is creating opportunity and jobs for the city of Greenville. And we certainly support the applicant in doing that, and we will work vehemently with all of you to kind of bring a vision forward that makes sense for Greenville.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Elliott?
Mayor, if I could make one other point, this was, you know, studied intently when we adopted Horizons back in twenty, going through the development process of 2016, 2017. We had intention to create, as the staff has mentioned, a zoning district that would allow for the Millennial Campus, and this is just following through with that recommendation. We're getting to it now, after the 2015 designation of Millennial Campus, and we're, we're getting to it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And that was our last speaker. Do we have anyone else that is registered that would like to speak or anything that was submitted?
That was our last registered speaker, but I will check the public input box just to see if there's any additional emails. Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional comments.
All right. Sounds good.
Mayor? Yes, you know, I really have seen in this city the takeover of communities, and leaving the community wrecked and bare. It just worries me that, I'm, I'm, I'm just worried about the fact that, even though when these big boxes come or big institutions come, they have one thing in mind, and I am the council representative for that area, and I'm just concerned that ECU will eventually swallow up the community.
Do you have any questions for any of the speakers?
No, they work for ECU. Questions for them, I'm just making statements, because that's what's going to happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone, okay, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any speakers registered to speak in opposition, and I will just check the inbox one more time to make sure there are no other comments in there. Okay. Mr. Mayor, there are no, there are no additional comments.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. Open for any more board discussion before we move on to the next public hearing. All right. Move on to the next public hearing. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number five is an ordinance requested by Three Twenty Enterprises LLC to amend the Future Land Use and Character Map for eight-point-three acres on commercial on the town of Simpson's Future Land Use Map to Track One Commercial three acres and Track Two High Density Residential five-point-three acres on the city of Greenville's Future Land Use and Character Map for the property located at the southeastern corner of the intersection of East Tenth Street and LT Hardy Road. And I'll turn this over to Chief Planner Shante Gooby for that presentation. Ms. Gooby?
All right. Good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you. There we go. Okay, this property is located in the eastern edge of the city. It's specifically located on East Tenth Street. This is LT Hardy Road. This is the new Walmart. This request is made up of two separate tracks. Track one, the request is for commercial. It is approximately three acres. Track two, the request is for high-density residential. It's approximately five acres. This request is, is in anticipation of an annexation request to the city limits and then a rezoning request. Currently, the property is located in the ETJ of Simpson. However, the owner wishes to develop with property, develop with sewer. And in order to do that, then the property has to be annexed into the city and receive city zoning. This is the Simpson Future Land Use Plan. The property is shown in Simpson as commercial, which you can see is the red. Simpson's Land Use Plan, it just has four separate categories. It has commercial, suburban residential, rural residential, and then agricultural. And so again, this is shown as commercial. The properties that are already located in the city limits are shown in green, and then the subject property is shown in red. This dash line also shows you the city's ETJ line as well. The property is currently zoned general business in the town of Simpson. There's general business across the street. This little section here is also general business. The orange on their particular map is residential. As far as the city is concerned, where Walmart is over to LT Hardy Road, there's already some commercial zoning there as well. The reason that this, for the request for the Future Land Use Map is because, again, the, there is an intent to annex into the city, and also, as part of that, they would need to get city zoning. So in order for us as staff, we always give you staff's opinion about a rezoning request, then we actually have to add this on to the Future Land Use Character Map. So that is what this request does. Under the current land use category for Simpson, the property could accommodate about thirty-four thousand square feet of commercial, some kind of commercial development. And under the requested land use category, that if it were developed with sewer, under the city standards, it could be twenty-six thousand square feet of commercial, and then Track Two would be approximately sixteen multifamily units. So this request does fulfill the principles of the Future Land Use Plan and the Horizons Plan. This pattern is similar to other land use patterns in the city. The Planning and Zoning Commission did unanimously approve this request at its April meeting. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
First speaker is Mr. John Day.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is John Day, and I'm here speaking to you this evening on behalf of the applicant, Three Twenty Enterprises LLC. The applicant is a real estate development company that is owned by Gerald Barfield. Mr. Barfield has offices in Greenville and lives in Pitt County and is a developer throughout all of North Carolina. He purchased this property in August of 2019, and we were attempting to have sewer extended to the property in order to make a sale, or we had some interest in the property, and they needed sewer in order to look into the development of the property. And we discovered, as Shante said, that you can't have city sewer to a property that's under the control of another municipality. So Mr. Barfield and I met with Mayor Richard Zeke with the Village of Simpson. We discussed a number of options, and over time, we came up with a plan that we requested the Village of Simpson to release this property from their ETJ. Simpson Planning and Zoning held a meeting and voted to release this property, and the Simpson Town Council held a meeting and voted to release this property. So that sort of brings us up to date on where we are right now, as we are requesting that this property be taken into Greenville's planning jurisdiction, our request of the Future Land Use Plan designation. Shante's made a good presentation. No reason for me to go through those details, except it appears suitable that commercial zoning would be appropriate for the road frontage, which is on East Tenth Street. It's a five-lane wide thoroughfare, and also, the property has frontage on LT Hardy Road. We have requested five acres of OR, high-density multifamily residential. That property is under contract right now to a multifamily developer, and he will address you in just a few minutes. I'll be more than glad to answer. Any questions that any of you have?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Day. Any questions for Mr. Day? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay, the next registered speaker that we have is Mr. George Tellosts.
Yes. Hello. Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you so much. I know it's been a long evening for you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thanks for all that you do for your city and for the public. It's greatly appreciated always, and especially at a time like this. So thank you. As, as Mr. Day stated, we are NVAH partners. We're a development company that is headquartered in Cincinnati. I am based out of Atlanta and handle the southeast for the company in terms of all development. And we are seeking to build seventy-two units on the five, a little over five acres of the property already discussed. So we are under contract with Mr. Barfield, and we'll be coming back before you with, with more detail during an annexation and a zoning, if we're fortunate enough to move to that level. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. If you'd like to know a little more about us, we're a national developer, primarily working east of the Mississippi River. We have roughly six thousand units in our portfolio, and we're, we're under construction on another fifteen hundred units currently. All we do is work for affordable housing, both senior and family, and we are looking to do a seventy-two-unit family property here. We'll have an equal number of one, two, and three-bedroom units, twenty-four of each type. And there's significant need in your community, and we look, look forward to just being a partner with you and in your community, and, and own and operate for a long time. We handle our own property management. We do our own development, and we hold these properties long-term. That is our strategy, and we hope to be around for a long time. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Any questions? All right. Seeing none. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
We do not have any other registered speakers, and I will check the inbox really quick.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other comments.
All right. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers to speak in opposition, and again, I'll check that inbox one more time. Mr. Mayor, we do not have any other written comments.
Okay. All right. The public hearing is now closed. Is there any board discussion before we move on to the next public hearing? Hearing none. Madam Manager, let's move on to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance amending the floodplain development prevention ordinance text to adopt the updated flood insurance rate maps and to align with the model ordinance. And I'll turn this over to city engineer, Mayor Darrell Norris.
Thank you. Can you hear me? All right. I'm going to share a presentation with you. Okay, so my, my name is Darrell Norris. I'm the stormwater engineer in the engineering department, and I'm coming to you tonight to present a text amendment to our floodplain flood damage prevention ordinance. The flood insurance studies and flood insurance rate maps.
We can't see your presentation.
Did it not share?
There we go.
You got it now?
Yeah, we're good.
I apologize. All right. Good news is I was still on the first slide. So the, the flood insurance studies and the flood insurance rate maps are determined by FEMA, and these are the things that we use to regulate our floodplain development and help protect lives and property in this, in the city during a flood event. The current flood maps first were adopted by city council in 2004, and then again, most recently updated on July seventh, two thousand fourteen. This included all the communities within Pitt County. These maps were developed and published by FEMA. If you look at the, the flood maps, this is a screenshot of the online version of the flood maps. You can see some of the flood zones that are, that are shown here in our currently adopted maps. Occasionally, those maps get updated. On June nineteenth this year of 2020, FEMA will publish an updated flood insurance study for certain areas within and to the east of the city of Greenville. We are required to adopt the flood insurance study and the accompanying rate maps in order to remain a good member in standing of the National Flood Insurance Program and to continue to provide citizens with a flood insurance discount. The map changes, as I indicated, are to the east of Greenville. There's actually several more panels off, off of this, this shown map, but these are the ones close to Greenville. The way flood maps are updated is they are drawn in what's called panels, and so you see these outlined red boxes. These are the specific map panels that are being updated with this update. The, if any portion of our jurisdiction extends into any panel that's being updated, we must adopt the new, the new map that references that new panel. Coincidentally, none of the actual changes to the floodplain itself are within our jurisdiction. This is a further zoomed-in map that shows the actual changes. This is a further zoomed-in map that shows the actual changes, both positive and negative, or increase or decrease in the floodplain mapping, but this area is to the east of the city of Greenville's jurisdiction, and there are actually no properties in the city of Greenville's jurisdiction that are being affected positively or negatively by this map change. We do, however, still have to reference the new maps because the panel touches our jurisdiction. In doing this, the state also reviewed our ordinance for compliance with the state model ordinance to ensure that we had all of the components of our floodplain management program up to date and in compliance with the state and with FEMA. So city staff worked with, city staff worked with the Department of Public Safety to bring these changes before you tonight, if you will. I'll go through. A couple of these are recommended, and then several of these are required by the state that we update. The adoption of the maps are indeed required, as I said, as well as other changes that align with the state model ordinance, such as updating definitions, the floodplain administrator's duties and responsibilities, detailing the floodplain development plan, submittal requirements, and survey datum references. The flood damage prevention ordinance also gives us an opportunity to maximize credit in our community rating system, and I'm going to go through a couple options for us, recommended changes to do just that, to maximize our credit. The community rating system is a program through the National Flood Insurance Program that allows us to earn points for various activities that the city completes. These may be things that we have in our ordinance, or these may actually be maintenance activities that we're performing, or flood reduction projects, public education. There's a host of various different activities that we can earn points for. For each 500 points that we earn, we lower our class in the program from 10, being the entry level, down to one being the best classification. With each class, there is a 5% reduction in insurance premiums annually for all flood insurance policies within the city's jurisdiction. The city is currently a Class VII and providing a 15% reduction in flood insurance premiums to all insurance holders within the city's jurisdiction. We're currently working to improve our class, and this is one of those steps. So the first of those potential recommended changes to earn points is the substantial damage or substantial improvement threshold. What this basically is, is if a property located in the floodplain is substantially damaged, or there are substantial improvements made to that property, then that property has to be elevated or flood-proofed to above the flood level once those changes are made. The threshold, or the minimum requirements of the NFIP, the threshold for that is 50% of the market value of the structure. So if the structure is damaged by more than 50% of its value, when it's repaired, it would have to be elevated to above the flood level. There are additional points if we lower that threshold to some number less than 50%. However, the points are not prorated by how much less, and 49% would still achieve the full additional bonus points for being less than a 50% threshold. So the proposal we have for you tonight is to change our threshold from a 50% substantial damage threshold to 49%, making a very minor, if not insignificant, impact to potential property owners, but while scoring additional points in our community rating system and potentially helping us reach that next class and save an additional 5% off of insurance premiums. The second recommended change is non-conversion agreements. What this is, is the, when a home is elevated, as you see in this picture, this is from our, I believe, Riverwalk neighborhood, when a home is elevated above the flood level, that portion below the home is to remain open and not enclosed. If this is enclosed into habitable space, then it's no longer elevated above the flood levels. So there are already currently regulations that prohibit or restrict the enclosure of those levels below the home. This would merely require an additional disclosure, essentially, where the property owner would sign and record an agreement that they understand that they cannot enclose the area below their home. Now, this is limited to just those elevated more than four feet. If it's elevated less than four feet, not many people are going to choose to try to make a habitable space less than that. By doing this, it doesn't really increase the regulatory burden, just provides another informational disclosure, and we can score an additional 60 points in the CRS program. So a summary of the recommended revisions, with the required ones that we talked about were the map and the definitions updates, but a summary of the recommended revisions are the threshold of substantial damage from 50 to 49% and the requiring the non-conversion Just a point of clarification from what you have in your agenda item, we did have a slight update to the actual ordinance before you, to amend. And the recommendation, this did go to the Planning and Zoning last month, and they unanimously voted to approve, to recommend it to council that they approve. So the recommendation is City Council adopt all required and recommended revisions to the flood damage prevention ordinance, as you have before you. And I'm available for any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Smiley?
So, Daryl, it seems like two or three years ago, we had a presentation about these classes of flood resilience that affected insurance, and I can't remember exactly what we were at the time, so maybe you can tell us how long we've been Class VII. But I also understood that once we hit the next class, then moving much beyond that was, I think they just, the engineers described it as just, you know, almost, you know, just infeasible, because it would be, it would involve so much change and effort. I was just curious if you could update us on that. How long have we been at Class VII, and, you know, is Class VIII truly a feasible option for us?
Well, I don't, I don't know exactly how long we've been at Seven. I do know it's been for quite a while, several five-year cycles. We get reevaluated on a five-year basis. I'm not sure, Lisa, if you know how long we've been at Seven.
I was just going to say, I've been here 18 years, and we've been a Seven since I've been here, so.
Okay. So the next, the next best class that we are striving to get to is a Six, and that's certainly achievable, we feel like. One of the discussions that we've had previously concerning our class and our ability to improve was revolved around the insurance ratings related to the building code. The state of North Carolina was behind a couple revisions on the building code, and per this program, there was a default that kept us from improving better than a Class VII until those new building codes were adopted at a state level. That has since been corrected, and now we have an opportunity to improve our class, and we hope to do just that. We actually have some additional studies that we have a consultant finishing up with a repetitive loss area analysis and a program for public information, and we'll be bringing that to you next month to look at for adoption as these studies and programs that will also earn us significant points towards our next class. So we truly anticipate we should be able to improve a class, possibly two.
Any other questions?
I just think that's excellent news. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any registered speakers in favor.
All right.
And I will check the inbox. Mr. Mayor, we do not have any comments submitted.
All right. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have, the first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any speakers in opposition, and I will check the inbox really quick. Okay. Yep. There are no comments submitted.
Okay. All right. Public hearing is now closed. Do we have any board discussion before we move on to the next public hearing? All right. Move on to the next public hearing. Madam Manager, our final public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Our final public hearing tonight is a resolution and economic development agreement for a job creation grant with ABC Phones of North Carolina doing business as Victra, and I Then I need to, whoops, let me do this. Let me share my screen. Okay, am I good?
Yep, good.
Okay. So let me start the slideshow. There we go. So this is a presentation for ABC Phones of North Carolina doing business as Victra. Victra is headquartered in Raleigh. It is the exclusive authorized retail partner of Verizon, and in that capacity has over 1,000 branded Verizon retail outlets. Victra is planning to bring inside telesale jobs to service wireless communication customers. They're planning to bring those jobs to Greenville, and they're planning to provide those jobs, and Victra is negotiating to bring a portion of that activity, those inside telesale jobs, to Greenville. The project for Victra would be to add approximately 200 jobs. The average weighted salary would be about $40,000, and the positions would include sales associates, IT professionals, HR staff, operations analyst, and executive leadership. The timing of the positions would be to add 125 positions by the end of 2023, with another 75 by the end of 2025. In addition to that, Victra is considering moving additional customer service positions and some other positions to Greenville from Raleigh, and those numbers are not included in the numbers above. Victra has requested, and what's included in your agreement, is that in Phase 1, we would provide $1,000 per job, up to $100,000 per year for the first three years of the grant, and then there would be Phase 2. If Phase 1 is achieved, we would go to Phase 2, which would provide up to $1,000 per job, up to a maximum of $100,000 per year for the second 75 jobs that they create. So for the first 125 jobs, they would get $100,000 or $1,000 per job for the first three years. If they achieve that goal and add additional positions, then we would consider two additional payments of $1,000. In the end, the jobs would have to be retained in Greenville for three years following the payment, the final payment of the grant. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions and recommend that the council approve this job creation grant for Victra.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for our city manager? Seeing none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
The first registered speaker that we have is Mr. Sean Patel.
Thank you, Council. I don't think I need to take up 10 minutes of your time this evening at this late hour. Here to answer questions. I know we at Victra are extremely excited about the opportunity to bring this program and project to the area, and assuming this passes and we are approved for this job creation grant, we are ready to move forward fast and begin to ramp up the facility and seed the program in the very near future.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Patel. Any questions for Mr. Patel? Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
The second speaker that we have is Mr. Rich Ballot.
Good morning, Councilmembers. No reason to take much of your time. I'm just here and available to answer any questions. As the CEO of Victra, I look forward to bringing these jobs to Greenville. So thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Any questions for Mr. Ballot? Seeing none. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
We do not have any additional speakers registered, but I will check the inbox. Mr. Mayor, we do not have any additional comments.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers in opposition, and I will check the inbox one more time. Mr. Mayor, there are no additional comments.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion before we move on to the next items. It looks like we're in a discussion. All right, we'll move on to other items, business. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll have presentations on the proposed fiscal year 2021 operating budgets for several of our partners, and we'll start first with the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. I believe Andrew Schmidt is on the, oh, there's Andrew right there. I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Let me get my screen up for you. All right, guys. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and so I'm here to just give you an idea of what we're looking at for 2020, 2021 with the CVB budget. So just to give you just a reminder of what we're here for, we want to definitely create that economic impact through travel and tourism, and really what we want to do is service our clients, which are customers that come and visit us, whether it's for reunion or convention, meeting, tournament, leisure travel, and we want to make sure those individuals have a good experience while they're here, and then they'll share that experience with others, and hopefully that'll help us market our community and get more people to visit. I think one thing that COVID has brought is a change to our mission as well, and we'll add to that, that we need to ensure safety for future visitors that come. We want to make sure that they understand that we're providing a safe atmosphere for themselves and their families. So some of the strategic goals that we'll be looking at for 2020, 2021 fiscal year, the goal one is to assist the economic recovery from the effects of COVID-19, and we really are anxious to restart travel to Greenville, Pitt County. We think tourism will be part of that solution for economic recovery for all destinations, getting individuals back for leisure travel, larger conventions, meetings, sports tournaments, the reunions, getting them to frequent our small businesses, hotels, restaurants- getting them to frequent our small businesses, hotels, restaurants, and creating that necessary occupancy tax for us to use to market with and also regenerate that sales tax for our cities to provide essential services. So we're looking forward to assisting in that. Goal two is to recapture both lost and postponed business in the meetings and sports tourism markets. Really since March 13th through the end of May, every piece of business that we had on the books has canceled. We do have a few things that are hanging on for June. We'll see what happens to that. But we're working very hard right now to, instead of have these individuals cancel outright, to have them reschedule. And for the most part, we're having good success with that. We want to work with our local hospitality industry to develop safe practice policies to ensure visitor health and safety when visiting Greenville and Pitt County. We've been on lots of different webinars and all the traveler sentiment is the same. They are just, you know, they're ready to travel. They want to get out of their houses, but they want to make sure they're doing it in a safe environment. So we need to work with our hospitality providers to make sure that that happens. We want to lead placemaking efforts by tying together community assets and that includes art, culture, entertainment, leisure activities. And we want to increase leisure travel. Of all the different markets in travel that we think will come back first, it is the leisure market that will come back first. So we want to make sure that we're continually involving our assets. And then goal five is more of a lofty goal. Don't know if that will happen this fiscal year or not, but we would love to be able to collaborate with our Pitt County partners to establish Pitt County as a certified retirement county in North Carolina. There's a lot of advantages to being a certified retirement county. Currently, right now, Winterville is a certified retirement community. But we would love to get the whole county designated as a retirement county with the state of North Carolina. Again, that's more of a lofty goal. It's going to depend on budget. We would not come to the city asking for funding in any way for that goal. So those are some of the goals that we're looking at to achieve with our budget for 2020, 2021. If you look at the history of the last five years, tourism has grown exponentially in Greenville and Pitt County. In 2014, we generated about $213 million in travel-related expenditures. And that has gone in five short years up to over $260 million. We know that 2019 will be a good year. Obviously, 2020 will be a tougher year with expenditures in Greenville, Pitt County. But we are growing, which is a positive thing. The CVA is governed by a board. Five of those individuals are appointed by the city council, five are appointed by county commissioners. On our board, we have four hotel owner operators, two individuals that are hospitality related but not within a hotel, and then four citizens that are interested in general, just in the hospitality industry. The Chamber of Commerce appoints one of our board members. And then we do have a city-county liaison and our city liaison is Brian Meyerhofer. And I want to just thank Brian for all his work on our board. He shows up to every meeting and is always contributing. So thank you, Brian, for your participation. We also have a county liaison and then a city finance officer acts as a treasurer for the CVB and that's Byron Hayes. And I want to thank Byron too, especially for the last month because I've probably blown his phone up too much and giving us, making sure that we've got a budget that's workable. So the approval process, we have our executive committee that's approved this budget. Our full board has. We're before the city council tonight and then we'll go before the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on June 2nd. And as a reminder, well, for the people watching at home, but the CVA does not receive revenues from the city's general fund, nor the county's general fund. All the funds that we spend are from the hotel motel occupancy tax. That's where it's generated from. We're not a membership organization, so we do not receive membership revenue. We do receive occupancy tax now from Airbnbs, which is a positive thing. Their numbers continue to grow. There's over 200 plus Airbnbs now in Pitt County. I think they'll see a lot of drop off in business due to COVID fears, but that's a good thing moving forward for the long term. And of course, for the last three to four months, we've seen, or three months running, we'll see some significant occupancy tax decline due to COVID-19. So we're not having a lot of travel, obviously, right now. And a lot of people stay in our hotels. And just a pie chart, you can see we collected almost 2.4 million last fiscal year in occupancy tax collections. And the pie chart just shows you how that money is divided up. So out of that, almost 2.4 million that was collected, just under 2 million or exactly half goes to retire the debt on the convention center. The second 3% is divided up between us and the Greenville Convention Center for Marketing. We get 2/3 of that second 3%, and the convention center gets 1/3 of that. So let's talk about our current revenues that will help support our budget for the next fiscal year. We collect our revenues from July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. That's what we use for our next fiscal year. Currently, we've got nine months of occupancy tax collections that have been collected and we're currently down about 6.9% of our last year's collection. We were even and then again, when March hit, basically March 13th was 13th was the date where we started seeing all the cancellations. And since March 13th, collections have been very, very low. So as a result, we've calculated our fiscal year budget for 2020, 2021 with a 25% decrease in tax collections from this last fiscal year. And that is an estimate. We feel pretty good about that estimate. It may be a little bit high, but you know, we're not going to see a lot of activity in April, May or June as far as collections goes. We've got to look at a pretty decent decline. And also with the lower occupancy tax collections, you have lower ADR in RevPAR numbers. And with our hotels, ADR is average daily rate and RevPAR is revenue per available room. So all those are lower too, which has an effect on the revenues that we collect. So for our 2020, 2021 budget, we set it at $1,330,378. Where we get those funds from, the occupancy tax collection will be responsible for $934,888.68. Our sports commission is funded through the capital reserve account and that'll be at an amount of $275,000. Our miscellaneous revenue is our interest from our fund balance. And then we will use fund balance next year in order to be competitive and also to be able to market correctly. It's going to be extremely competitive. Once travel is started back, all the destinations will be, will flood the markets with messaging, trying to get those individuals, which will be a smaller pool to come to their destinations. I do have an asterisk by the fund balance. We will not use the whole $120,000, but that is what's used right now to balance our budget. When COVID-19 hit in March, by the end of March, we had spending freezes in place for almost every line item category. So we will come in under budget and we can recycle some of that money that is under budget and put it towards next fiscal year. So that'll actually reduce the amount of fund balance that we need to use. And then the convention center will be using some of their marketing reserve and I'll explain that in just a minute. So our budget highlights, how is the decrease in funding going to affect us? We will have a decrease in staffing level for next year. We have seven full-time equivalents right now on our staff. We have two individuals that are slated for retirement, one in the summer and one in winter. We will not fill those positions. We will not hire full-time replacements. We will look to maybe use some part-time help, but that will help us tremendously in battling the shortage that we have. We'll reduce our contracted services line item. We had several possible tourism projects that we were going to try to launch in 2020, 2021 and those are just simply going to have to be put on hold for a year or two. We will not travel as much as we did this past year. I think there'll be more virtual opportunities, virtual trade shows, virtual site tours that we can use to still meet with meeting planners and sports tourism rights holders, but we'll cut our travel back. Unfortunately, sponsorship dollars will be cut. And then the only thing that we have not decreased in our line item is our marketing dollars. We feel like that's going to be extremely important again for us to market and message to potential travelers. So that is in line with what we did this past year. Through our budget, we are required through the inter-local agreement to provide funding for the Greenville Convention Center marketing. And so our budget does include the 2020, 2021 GCC budget as well. And their projection of that 1/3 of occupancy tax is also at a 25% reduction. So GCC will likely get about $311,000 from that occupancy tax. And they will also use a marketing reserve. They've got a marketing reserve, just like we have a fund balance. And they're choosing to use $73,000 of their marketing reserve again to help supplement marketing that the convention center is going to need to do. So the GCC total budget, which lies within our total budget of 1.3, is $385,287.48. And we do give those funds to the convention center on a monthly basis so they give us their monthly expenses and reimburse them for their expenses. So we're definitely working on a little bit less, obviously, than we were last year, but everybody is. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has at this point about our budget for next fiscal year.
Any questions for Mr. Schmidt?
This is Councilmember Meyerhofer. I just want to thank Andrew for all his work and just keep your head up, buddy. I know it's not a great time, but I appreciate all the work that you do.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions for Mr. Schmidt?
Kind of reiterate what Councilmember Meyerhofer said. I can't think of an industry that's probably been hurt more than the industry that you are in. And we had so much momentum going and to be basically just halted and stopped, I know it's put you in a very tough position, but you guys are continuing to work hard and I appreciate everything you guys have done to promote Greenville and bring more events like Little League Softball World Series, which we're looking forward to in 2021 to bring here, so.
Yeah, travel will be back.
That's right.
We'll be back.
That's right. So thank you.
Thank you guys very much for what you're doing. We appreciate your cooperation and help.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Manager.
Our next presentation is from Shepherd Memorial Library and I'll call on Library Director Greg Needham.
Okay. I'm hoping you can now hear me and see me. Yeah, okay. Sorry about that. I ended up muted and my video stopped. So there's your library, still there. Yep. And even though I'm joining you virtually, I hope that my enthusiasm and excitement will still come through about what we're doing at your public library in the midst of, you know, it's very challenging times. But I can tell you, and so I've got just a short PowerPoint that I'll come to with the budget overview. But before I do, just to share a bit about what we're doing to adapt and still provide as much library service as possible, I can tell you that for several years, almost this last decade, we've been building, developing a fantastic array of e-resources. So we have a growing collection of ebooks, e-magazines, downloadable audio, streaming video, daily reflector archive, NC Kids ebooks. So a whole array of e-resources and those have been growing steadily in the last five years. But compared with January and February, our April usage of our ebooks and other e-resources, our ebooks are more than doubled in use. So as you can imagine, people are using those like never before and people maybe who wouldn't have tried an ebook now are. So really glad to have those resources already in place. And again, they're books for all ages from youngest children up. At the same time, you know, we have not just our focus on lifelong learning, but also on early literacy. And we're ordinarily offering a full array of reading-centered, early literacy programming for all ages from birth up. And once we saw that we couldn't continue to carry those on after the middle of March, our children's staff did a fantastic job of springing into action and developing wonderful virtual versions of our various programs. And so we now offer, I'm trying to see whether you can, I'm not hearing and seeing myself. Yep, there we go. So our virtual programs are getting fantastic participation. And I'll just give you an example. In April, we had, I think, 52 individual reading-centered programs and over 3,000 participants tuning in to those reading-centered programs. So fantastic use. And as we get closer, so we're now in our, in our phase one, we're doing curbside at four locations. And so we have hundreds of requests for curbside pickups every day. We're doing those, getting books back in people's hands. And as we're getting ready for phase two, we'll be preparing to add back safe public access for limited numbers of patrons at a time, depending on how the restrictions actually shape up. So we're looking forward to getting patrons back in the building to browse for their own books and checkout. We've got self-checkout units at each location, lots of measures in place to make it a safe and good experience. So your library is adapting and providing all kinds of service in the midst of COVID-19. When we look at the budget, this is actually the budget that was approved by the library board pre-COVID-19 impact. And so it was built, as it always is, on the city's target. So that $1,347,299 was the target we had from the city. We know that going forward, we're going to see the budget adapted after local governments, I'll go to the next slide, after local governments approve budgets in June. So these were the figures that we were requesting from City of Greenville, Pitt County, Town of Bethel, Town of Winterville before COVID-19 impacts. And we know there'll be revenue reductions. What always happens every year after local governments approve budgets, we get into July, the first part of July, we'll have the library board meeting. There'll be budget amendment and the budget's adapted so that the expenditure budget agrees with whatever revenues were approved by local government. So in the middle of that slide is our $190,682 in state aid. So that's our annual state funding. Now I'll speak to that again a little bit and what impact our local funding has on that. Greenville Housing Authority, that's federal pass-through funds that supports the Moywood Reading Room at the community center. We have library-generated fines and fees that'll be impacted by COVID-19 closure and so on. And we've also got a couple of projects, well, really the HVAC project. We've got 20-year-old R22 cooling units at the main library that we were hoping to be able to go ahead and replace. That sort of came to the front burner because of that federally mandated change from one refrigerant R22 to R410A. And what we were asking the city to do was to move funding that had been intended for a roof replacement at the library that can go a bit longer and get us, start changing those air conditioning units. And we were going to pitch in some library fund balance for that to make it happen. That fund, those funds, 150 was already in FIP, but we hope that can still be prioritized as a capital project. But you know, as long as they're still running, those units haven't kicked the bucket. If we couldn't control humidity at the main library, there were a quarter of a million books that could grow mold and become a health hazard of their own. So you know, we hope that we can do something and continue to cool that main library. The expenditure budget breaks out like that. And I said, speak to state aid again. So that $190,682, just very briefly, there's a maintenance of effort requirement built in with that. We know the city that you'll do what you can in funding the library. We don't know how those revenue shortfalls will shape up exactly. But just for your awareness, if our other local funders, Pitt County, Town of Winterville, Town of Bethel, funded us at a flat level, the same as they have this year, and the city had to reduce our revenue target, that 862, oh, sorry, 86,275 is the amount that we could drop before we broke below our maintenance of effort benchmark. And we would begin to lose a percentage of our state funding. And that also carries an extra burden. What happens when there's a difficult budget statewide, all of the libraries who qualify for state funding, the ones that can't meet their benchmark will have percent reductions. And all of that goes into a bucket that's then redistributed to whatever libraries are lucky enough to still make their MOE. So it's kind of a double whammy. So libraries always want to be the one that's still there making MOE because you'll get potentially tens of thousands of dollars extra distributed. So this is more different than I thought. this is more different than I thought during this virtually. Have you been able to hear me okay? I can address any questions that we may have? Okay, good. As always, thank you very much for all of your support of the library, literacy, lifelong learning. Your library is adapting to continue providing service in every way that we can. We'll be as nimble as we can. And as our director emeritus, the former library director Willie Nelmes would have said, if you give us a million dollars, we'll give you a million dollars worth of library. You give us five hundred thousand dollars, we'll give you five hundred thousand dollars worth of library. So we'll we'll adapt and do the best we can with what resources we have and provide those vital libraries, resources for the community. And I'll catch my breath and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Needham?
I will say thank you for all that you do. I appreciate the fact that you, like all of us, are adapting to these unfortunate times and continue to offer great service. So thank you for all that you're doing and look forward to hearing more great things in 2020, 2021.
Thanks, Mayor Colley. I'm going to share that.
All right. No other questions? Madam Manager, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Our final presentation this evening is from the Greenville Utilities Commission, and I'll call on GUC Director Tony Cannon, General Manager. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you very much, Mayor, Member of the Council, City Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget. I'm going to try and share the screen now. And I'll go through the presentation and answer any questions that you have along the way. We'll start with a review of this year, what we've done to adjust for COVID-19, that staff recommendations moving forward, the proposed budget in the context of the long-term financial forecast that we used for our the current year status, we have reduced our commercial load projections for electric and gas by ten percent. Reduced our interest income by three hundred thousand dollars. Reduced the reconnect fees for electric and water by a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, and an increase of bad debt expense that we had in the budget from six forty-two to seven fifty. That's an increase of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. This brings our total revenue for the year to two hundred and sixty-four million dollars. Balance out with our expenses, we do make transfers to the city, add debt service, transfer the OPEC trust to five hundred thousand dollars, rate stabilization, transferring natural gas of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, and then transfer to capital projects, for current and future projects that we have of eight million dollars. You will notice on the revenue side, on the top, you do see the transfer there in fund capital projects that's including, included in that eight hundred eighty-two thousand dollars was our funding of five hundred thousand dollars for the Greenville EMC Alliance. We did not want that to get the rates, so we are transferring in fund capital projects for that. And then we're sharing the transfer from rate stabilization because we are taking a hit on our electric revenues due to the virus. Even with that, we do have strong key performance indicators projected for the end of the year, good debt service coverage, a healthy fund balance, and good base cash on hand. This is where I'd like to point out that which ratings this week, we have formed our double A minus rating. And we did share the thing exactly what we were doing to manage the impacts of COVID-19, including the moratorium on cutoffs throughout the rest of this month. So we started that mid-May and mid-March, and we're going through the end of May. They used a factor of nine percent and over what we were estimating to come up with their projections, and they were able to confirm, and reaffirm our rating of double A minus. So I think that's a good piece of news for us right here. Moving on to the proposed budget, we do have quite a few adjustments that we've made thanks to COVID-19. And you can see here what they are. We are deferring the proposed water rate increases. We have reduced to zero the growth rate for residential customers for all funds, all four funds. We revised our commercial growth rate to negative two percent for electric and gas, and revised that to negative one percent for water and wastewater. We did reduce our interest income by six hundred thousand dollars and reduced the reconnect fees. We're not allowed to charge reconnect fees, getting this moratorium from the state. We reduced some of that on for next year, but we've got a six-month period starting July one, where we will not be charging reconnect fees. The folks who are disconnected are not able to make their payments. And then we increased the bad debt expense for next year as well. What that results in is a budget of two hundred and seventy-one million dollars. I do see the transfer from capital projects, again, some of that's for capital outlet projects that we have in the budget, five hundred thousand of that, again, is for the Greenville EMC Alliance, a transfer from rate stabilization of five point eight million dollars. And then you see there that we're also using the appropriated fund balance of seven million dollars. What that is for is for the construction of our fleet maintenance facility at the new operations center. That's one of the projects that we'll be introducing this year. The driver on the expense side of the house is always natural gas and electricity purchases. We do have capital outlet in the budget, the turnover to the city at six point four million dollars, transfer to the OPEC trust, and then transferring twelve million dollars to capital projects. On there, it's going to be electric, water, and natural gas. With all that, including the adjustments that we made this year rolling into next year and the adjustments next year for however we do it fix the end of the year with good debt service coverage, healthy fund balance, and steady base cash on hand. And we'll show you what that looks like rolling through the five-year financial plan in a second. The one key change that we have, we did an electric rate study this past year. They had a number of recommendations. None of them will bring forward at this time is to increase the charge for restoring electric water or any other services from fifty-five dollars to sixty-five dollars at night and weekends. That's the way that our call. Key provisions in the budget, last year we were forecasting a four point one percent electric rate increase. That is now zero. Last year we were forecasting six point nine percent water, which is now zero. And then we maintain zero rate increases for sewer and natural gas as well. Zero growth in a number of connections. I mentioned the annual turnover to the city, the transfer from the electric rate stabilization fund. We do have capital and maintenance expansion programs, although they are being used. You don't want to get too far down the road when it comes to capital. And some of the big ones that we have out there, the water plant expansion, is underway. And you're going to see a budget amendment from that for us for next month. We received the bids. The bids came in a little bit higher. We received the bids in March. We're negotiating now, but that budget's going to increase from forty-seven and a half to fifty-five million dollars. And we are going to have that offset by moving some of the system improvements that were scheduled within the capital planning period out beyond this current period so that it balances out and doesn't impact the rate plan. Our continuing health and dental plans, transferring medical trust. We do have an increase of eight point nine five percent to ten point nine five percent of three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars for our contribution for the local government employee retirement system. And then we are going to have some retirements this next year. So while we're in a hiring freeze, there are certain positions that we'll have to fill. And we're going to make sure that we have smooth transitions in some of those key areas. Looking at this in the context of our long-term financial forecast, I'll just draw your attention to the big green dots about at about the bottom of the page there. This is what we're going to watch really closely. We're able to maintain our financial metrics that should help us maintain our bond rating throughout the five-year planning period so that we are using rate stabilization every year out to 2025, which was the plan to do that, to draw that down, because we know that in 2025 we will have the deficit debt roll-off that we had to take on. So it's going to be a smooth transition. The results of the electric rate study will be implemented over the five-year period so that it's a smooth transition when we get to 2026. Each fund, delaying the increases that we have planned for this year does have an effect out in future years. I think we see some inflectionary increases in the next three years for electric with minimal impacts on the bills. For water, we did have to push the increase from this year and next year out of year. So everything shifted well into, shifted one year out. To make sure that we maintain balance and minimizing impacts to our customers as well, we will also maintain our good coverages and key performance indicators. As I will point out, when we roll the debt on for water treatment plant, which will come on our books in 2023, we do get below that sixty percent equity capitalization ratio, but then it bounce right back from that going out into the future year. Sewer, good healthy fund balance. You do see a couple of inflectionary increases in the out years. There, but maintaining a very affordable sewer rate as well. Natural gas, here again, metal increases future years, first two years, metal increases. And you see that we're maintaining good financial metrics throughout the period as well in the natural gas fund. Our capital improvement fund, that will do over two hundred and nineteen million dollars worth of capital that we need to do. And we're going to fund that revenue bonds, from SRF loans, we've approved two loans for us. Through SRF, we were able to secure forty million dollars in funding for the water treatment plant expansion at a very affordable interest rate. And that's going to go a long way to helping us move forward with those projects. And then we have cash funding as well for a lot of the water projects and some of the other projects that we'll cover with you. The capital improvement project scheduled to be adopted with the budget this year, I mentioned the fleet maintenance building, the use of our unappropriated fund balance to pay for the fleet maintenance building. We do have to start replacing our generators on the electric system, which allows us to do road management and keep our electric costs down. But generators are ending, coming to the end of their useful life. They've been on the system for twenty-five years, which is when we went to this way of buying electricity several years ago, where we had to reduce the fee in order to control our costs. You see a water plant project there who are stabilizing the riverbank at our water intakes. And then gas projects related to, too related to DOT projects, which may now be pushed out, but we also have to build a a new plan on the VOA rate to increase pressures on that side of the system. We always want to make sure that we're affordable when we're comparing with our peers in North Carolina. So we compare against the top fifteen cities for all four utilities. And you see where the median is there. We're below the median, we're lower than you see that we're a little bit higher on residential than some of the cities out west that serve by beginning to Carolinas. We are anticipating that beginning to Carolinas will ask for a rate increase on their customers in that part of the state, which will get us in line and very competitive on the residential side. Very competitive here again, looking at schools, we've got a lot of schools on our system in a good spot there. And then we get into the heavier electric users. We're in a really competitive spot because we're able to use these trade-in generators to help get those costs down for larger companies, including big box grocery stores. So in summary, the budgets are balanced. It is going to have an impact on us with COVID. Increase, you know, the heaven close and number forming, and the total impact is probably going to be around five million dollars on our budget on the revenue side. We'll have an offsetting expense there as we're not buying electricity and natural gas to serve those, serve that load, but it is going to have an impact. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Cannon? I'm telling any questions?
Well, you guys are tired.
Well, we appreciate it. And I appreciate the fact that we've got no increases across the board. I know it's a very tough time. I appreciate everything you guys have done as well to adjust to COVID-19 and the effects that have taken place. Because I know revenues are probably down at this point, but I appreciate you understanding the fact that 2020, 2021 fiscal year is probably going to be tough for people in our community. And last thing we need is for them to have to pay more money than they have to.
I agree. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Manager? City Managers' Report?
Am I muted? I'm not muted. I just had one quick item. I'd like the council to join me and congratulating Danisha Harris. Danisha is our Financial Services Manager and has been named President of the North Carolina NWBE Coordinators Network. She's for North Carolina. She's been a member of the organization for ten years and most recently served as Vice President of the organization. So please help me in congratulating Ms. Harris on this. That's all I have.
Congratulations, Ms. Harris. All right. Now we move on to comments from the mayor and the city council. Start with Councilmember... Let's start from the top. Litchfield. I think he's on mute.
No comment.
All right. Let's go to Councilmember Smiley.
I have no comments.
All right, Councilmember Bell. He's on mute.
I read his lips. He said no comment.
I said no comment. It looked like I was unmuted on mine. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Councilmember Daniels?
I'd like to again congratulate Ms. Danisha Harris on all of her accomplishments. She is truly an asset to everybody that she comes in contact with, and to remind everyone to please complete your census and have a good night.
All right. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
No comment. Move to adjourn. Can we do that yet?
No, no, no. No, we got something else. All right, Mayor Protim Glover?
Just want to say that stay well, continue to disdism yourself, and hopefully we'll get out of this virus thing. It looks, I've watched the news and it looks very bleak for us to be able to get out of it by June. So everybody hang in there, keep your chin up, stay well.
All right. That leaves me. Everybody say, stay healthy, and everybody get some sleep. I think this has got to be probably one of our latest meetings in the last two and a half years. So I can see Mayor Protim Glover, she's tired right now. Everybody, everybody go home and get some sleep. So I would like, if somebody would like to make a motion to place all the public hearings on the May eighteenth at six PM agenda and to recess, that would be fantastic.
So moved. Councilmember Bell here.
Second. Councilmember Daniels.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. Attorney McGurn, are we good?
Yeah, I would just add to that, that we're going to place that notice on the website pursuant to the open meetings law. If this motion passes, we'll place the recessed meeting on the website, so.
Friendly Amendment, Councilmember Bell? Will you accept it?
I accept.
Councilmember Daniels?
Second, second decision. You know what I mean.
I got you. All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Bell, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay, and I will call on the city clerk to take the vote.
Mayor Protim Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
Aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Litchfield? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
And that's six zero in approval.
All right, we are in recess. Everybody have a good night.
Thanks. Thank you all. Good night. Peace and love.